Author and a mentor herself. So that was a pretty neat story. Another student said, "MTC gave me my first friend. I could share my experiences and tell her everything. I'm so grateful for my journey with MTC." Someone else described her mentor as her cheerleader in life. And finally, another student said that her mentor was someone in her corner. So hopefully, this has inspired all of you to learn a little bit more about Mentor-Tutor Connection. I left my cards in front. And for those online, if you are interested in mentoring or learning more about our program, we have an information session coming up on January 17th at the YMCA. And you can find information at mentortutorconnection.org. We would love to tell you more about it. So thank you again for having me.
Thank you so much.
On to our next special item, which has to do with what I decided to make the theme of my mayorship, which is emergency preparedness. Madam City Clerk, do you have a slide to put up? So as most people know, one of the... My belief... Can't even get the words out. The way I describe Los Altos is that we are a strong community, and we are a strong community because we have strong roots. But strong roots do not just happen. Strong roots exist because we, the members of the community, make an effort to ensure that we have a strong, healthy community. And one of the roots that I think is very important and that I want to highlight is being prepared for an emergency. The city of Los Altos is sponsoring five classes over the next several weeks, along with Resilient Los Altos. And you could see on your screen the date and time for each of the classes. They deal with issues such as personal emergency preparedness, to how to get emergency... how to get alerts in emergency situations, what can go into a kit. Each and every one of these classes is an opportunity for all of us to learn what we can do to prepare ourselves to be ready in case the worst hits. So again, these classes are sponsored by the city of Los Altos. They have been advertised... not advertised, but they've been mentioned in the town cryer. They've also been listed in the city manager's weekly newsletter. They are being run in conjunction with the city's Parks and Rec Department. And if you go to the city's website, I think the link is to Civic Rec... oh, here, great. Here is a QR code. That QR code will take you to the city's Civic Rec, the Parks and Recreation Class signup page, registration page. All of those five classes, you can register for any of those classes on that page. And again, I encourage everyone to take a look at it, see what it's all about, take a class, maybe two, maybe more. It's important information, and it's a good first step for anyone who wants to just do a little bit better in making sure that they are ready for an emergency. So let me close by saying that preparing yourself, your family, and your neighborhood is one of the very best ways that you can contribute to the strength of our community. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. So the next item of business is public comments for items not on the agenda.
We have one speaker, Mr. Gary Haddon.
Okay. If you give the speaker three minutes, please.
Good evening. Gary Haddon, Los Altos resident. I'm going to talk about two things. I guess it's still three minutes. One is trees. Greentown is planting trees. We're up to 427, and the goal is 500 or thereabouts, maybe 527. We'll see. Anyway, it's really wonderful to get a tree in the ground. I enjoy it. I've been doing it for five years now. And it's also great because I work with the students to get the trees planted. The green team at the high school, where's the mentor tutor, you know? It's important to work with the kids. I've had kids as young as the Brownie Scout Troop help me plant a tree. So if you know anybody who wants a tree yourselves, or anybody in the community, go to greentownlosaltos.org and sign up. The second thing is, a couple of years ago, Greentown entered a contest with Strong Towns to... and I proposed Los Altos as a good candidate for that, because we do a lot of things right. And I thought we would do well. We got into the first round, so it was a good experience. This year, I have something else in mind, which is to get a little more granular. You know, there's no timer here. Anyway, I want to do it to the neighborhood level. I want to build strong neighborhoods. And I think the way to do that is to recognize the neighborhoods that are already doing that. There are a lot of neighborhoods that have block parties. They get together with their neighbors, and they do things. Fourth of July parties, potlucks. There are things that people do right now. And so I want to bring in block action teams. That helps with the emergency response. That's very important, and so we want to recognize that, too. So the idea was to bring all the people who are doing these things together for a community gathering. And I've had people reach out to me and say, "I'll help you with that." And so I think it has some... it could work. Robert Hyman with State Street Market has offered the use of his marketplace as a gathering spot. He says, "Yep, free of charge. Come on over." So I'm looking at having people show up, share some stories, and maybe they'll feel good about what they're doing, and maybe inspire others to do the same thing. How are we doing on time? There we go. That's it. All the best. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Thank you very much, Mr. Haddon. Any other comments? Okay. Since there are no other public speakers, let's move on to the consent calendar. Do any council members want to pull anything from the consent calendar? Okay? Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on the consent calendar? Okay? I'd like to entertain a motion.
So move that we approve the consent calendar items one and two.
Second?
Councilmember Flagler?
Yes.
Councilmember Liang?
Yes.
Councilmember Meadows?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Daley?
Yes.
Mayor Weinberg?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, look at that. Onto our last item for the evening. Okay. So we're moving on to item number three, which is to review and provide direction for the city council's strategic goals for the upcoming year. So a little bit of background. Section 8.8 of our norms and procedures provides that the council will have an annual retreat to set its priorities for the coming year. So I look to my colleagues and say, "Welcome to the retreats." There's three things that I hope we'll be able to accomplish tonight. First and foremost, we need to review and, if necessary, revise our priorities for the year. Second, I would like us to consider modifying changes or adding to our policies and procedures. And finally, just a bit of housekeeping business, we should formally dissolve the Public Safety Infrastructure Ad Hoc Subcommittee. Prior to the meeting tonight, everyone had an opportunity to suggest additional policies and procedures. And earlier today, we received an email that had a list, I think, of 10 different items. Of the 10 that were sent to staff, two are purely procedural, so I suggest that we discuss them last, and the other eight can be incorporated into our discussion of priorities. And just so everyone is aware, our discussion tonight, it's not limited to those 10 items. It's not limited just to the six priorities that we established last year. If anyone has anything additional they want to bring up, or that they want to discuss, that they think maybe we should make a priority, or should take office of priority, some thinking outside of the box perhaps, I welcome all that contribution tonight. So the packet included a copy of the priorities that we set last year. And my personal belief is that we did a pretty good job setting our priorities. I think we had a good year. I think that we accomplished a lot under each of the six overall priorities that we had. It is the same council, the same council members this year. Because we were successful last year, my personal belief is not a lot of change is needed. But of course, I want to hear from everyone else, and this is our opportunity to tweak things. It is a new year. There are new circumstances. Last year at this time, our housing element update had not yet... I don't think it had even been submitted to HCD. We now have an accepted housing element update, and that's going to change some of the things that we're doing. With that, my personal belief is that what we did last year is pretty good. One of the items that was circulated to the council members was our resolution from 2021 that set forth our five-year strategic goals. A lot of the language and the priorities that we adopted last year are verbatim or very close to those strategic goals, but I'm glad that they were circulated again so that they could be sort of refreshed in everyone's mind. And with that, is there anyone who would like to get us started on our priorities? Is there a staff report?
Mayor, we have just a PowerPoint with the priorities after introduction, if you'd like us to put it up, just as reference.
Oh, my apologies. Yes, please.
Can I ask a question with clarification? So something... we could propose an item, and it could be not necessarily a priority, but could be a valid future agenda item. So I don't know how you would define the difference, and maybe that's just the conversation we would have if we had an item that we wanted to propose. It may or may not hit the priority list, but could indeed be...
Correct. So Madam City Attorney and Mr. City Manager, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that council will give direction to staff. If we are able to come up with language for our priorities for 2024, that would come back to us in the form of resolution, probably on the consent calendar. If there are other things that we want to do, for instance, one of the things that I suggested was moving to electronic voting. If that's something that the council wanted to do, I don't know if it would have to come up as a separate agenda item or a resolution, but if there are things that are above and beyond putting our priorities into resolution form, then it probably would have to be a future agenda item. But if there's overwhelming agreement for it, then staff will have an indication of whether it just goes on consent, or if it's something that we need to investigate in more detail.
Yeah, for further discussion and investigation, it would have to come back.
Clarification, because I think how I'm understanding is that this is a council strategic priority setting, but then yet you made it sound like this is also going to function as our retreat. And so I'm getting a misunderstanding, so I just needed to better understand that we are looking at a higher level of strategic goals. So I understand that you have on here, like you said, for example, electronic voting. I think we have to have a better understanding. I don't think it's our city's goal as to how we want to have that. I think that that is a... maybe a priority, but it's not a strategic overarching goal for the city. So I'm getting a little confused here. So... and I think by having strategic goals, it's allowing us to better work with staff or to have some guidance for staff, to help bring back a plan for implementation of how we are going to accomplish these goals. So help me understand this a little better, because I'm quite confused now.
Sure. The strategic goals, of course, are a statement by the council of what are our values. That's a statement that we make to the community. Just as important are our goals, inform staff as to what we want to accomplish, and gives them an indication what projects they should be working on. And we define that throughout the year. One of the best examples is probably the budget process, where staff prepares a proposed budget. Of course, council will muck around with it, because that's what we do. But in putting together something like the proposed budget, staff will take into consideration, well, what are council's priorities? What are the other policies that we've set forth in prior resolutions, in our general plan, in our master plans? So that the priorities that we establish today, assuming we do establish, are going to inform staff of how we want them to perform their work, and it is going to communicate to our residents what it is that we hold as our values. We have the presentation, please?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. One thing that I think the city clerk would like to remind about procedural is when you would like to take public comments.
Why don't we do the staff report first, and then questions from council, and then we'll do public comments.
Great. Let me... let me call it up. And this is great, because the mayor has pretty much given the presentation for me. So if it will come up. All right. As the mayor indicated, this is an opportunity to review last year's priority. The slides that I have will just help to kick off... sort of kick off the discussion, review if there's anything that needs to be added, if there's some changes that need to be made. The council has... last year adopted six strategic priorities. They're listed there on the screen. Each one of them has a definition that the council further set. I won't read through them. You have them in your packet, as well as... you can find those online. But we have asset management, business communities, community safety, environmental sustainability, housing, and... and neighborhood safety infrastructure. A note on neighborhood safety infrastructure, following the council's discussion last year, the ad hoc subcommittee was directed to go back and to further define what this would be, following a presentation that the committee gave to the council. That happened in May of 2023, when the committee presented results of a community survey. Those results sort of necessitated further thought and discussion from the council and direction on where to go with this priority. And then, as the mayor indicated, you received in the council Q and A list of proposed either reaffirmations of priorities or new suggestion items for the council to consider. As the mayor indicated as well, there are a couple that are more procedural discussions. There is one item that, if it is a priority, would need further council direction and discussion. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Are there any clarifying questions from staff? You send me from council. Councilmember Flagler?
Thank you, Mayor. And before I ask my question, I do have to comment on your beautiful tie. Very nice. Well done. Very nice. I just want to clarify the point that was brought up by Councilmember Meadows and Councilmember Liang on certain items that may be more projects or procedures. In the past, I know we've done it where we may have this umbrella priority, but there are specific projects or procedures that would fall within that priority, and that's where it would fit. So for example, and I'm not advocating for this priority, but one priority could be modernizing City Hall, or modernizing how we conduct business, because it's more efficient for residents and staff. So that could be a priority where we want to invest staff and resources focused on that. And one of the ways to accomplish that priority or to meet that goal is, for example, electronic voting. And so I think through the discussion, some of these projects or procedures that may come up, depending on our priorities, may actually fit within one of the priorities. And so I just wanted to note, sometimes that happens organically. Oh, there should be a question? I'm sorry.
Are there any other questions from staff? All right. Do we have any public comment? Let's give three minutes.
The first speaker is Eric Steinle.
Give him a light for kids, careful.
Well, that was... I was admired. Are you selling them? How much is it worth?
It's priceless. No, it's a very nice tie. Yes, yes, okay. I want to talk about how you do priorities, because I think that I don't like the way you do them. I think you have to think about priorities in a very different way. There's a tendency in this council to argue about adverbs. You know me. Nobody gets more pleasure out of arguing about adverbs than I do, but I don't think that's what you're here for. You are here to set policy. Policy with a Y, not an IES. One policy, one overarching idea, one aim for which you are working, okay? And everything that you do is for that. I got this... stole this idea from Dave Reader, who talks about when he was on the board of the El Comino Community Hospital. The board was having problems. The hospital was having problems. They were just all over the place. So they decided to have a single aim. Their aim was put patients first. Everything that they looked at from that point on was from that perspective. If it put patients first, they would consider it. If it didn't, they wouldn't. And I think that this council will be well advised to think in those terms. Start there, and aim that affects a policy, that affects a benefit to the city, and everything fits under there or it doesn't. You can't do everything. You shouldn't try to do everything. Otherwise, you get lost in the weeds. And I've sat through all the meetings where you tried to whack the weeds, and I'll tell you, at the end, you just have sentences you like, but you don't necessarily get forward. So I think that what you need to do is to come up with a single aim, okay? And then you're going to work towards that aim. And if that's what you're going to do, everything will be in that service. I even came up with an example. This I give you for free. Normally, I don't do the heavy lifting, but something like bring Los Altos together. And I thought of this because of what Jonathan and Sally were able to do with the meetings after October 7. We couldn't solve the world's problems. There were people who said it wasn't really the city's business even to talk about that. And it isn't the city's business, but it is the city's business to talk with each other. And those meetings brought people together in a way that nothing else would. I would sincerely hope we never have a reason to do that again, but that's the kind of thing I'm talking about, where you are motivated to do a single good thing for the city, and everything that you do is based on that. The rest of it, whether you call it priorities, or goals, or whatever, doesn't really matter, okay? That's stuff to do. You don't need to write budget on your to-do list. You don't need to write capital improvement projects on your to-do list. The staff, you have a great staff. They're going to bring it to you, whether you like it or not, okay? That's not what you need to do. You need to be thinking about how the policy, Y, not IES, is going to be carried out. And so I would encourage you to start there. The rest of it will fall into place. You'll get things done. You won't get things done. Some of what's on the list will fit into it. Some of it may not. It doesn't matter, okay? Because it'll eventually get done. Something will happen. But do what you can. And I think the way to do that, the way to organize that, is to do it by setting a policy, a... an aim, and then a yardstick to measure it. That's the way to do it. So that would be my suggestion to you. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Lilly Najimi.
Hi, councilmembers. City staff, happy new year. Done a lot of work last year to implement the housing element, and it's done a great job. But there are some considerations for single-family homes that are behind these developments. So on the housing element update, there were two plans. There was one, 1B, facilitate higher density in commercial thoroughfare, and Program 1F to rezone Village Court parcel. And in none of these two plans, there was consideration for single-family homes that are behind these developments. As part of the Mountain View Precise Plan, they have already done that, so I want to bring that to your attention, because Mountain View has been working on this for a long time. It's been years that they have implemented these programs. And I did send the Mountain View Precise Plan to each of the council members. I sent it later today, so you may not have seen it yet. But, you know, we are neighbor cities, so we need to be consistent. We need to take their lead. We need to learn from them, because they have done this work already. And there are two... so when they have the developments, they have consideration, both in terms of higher floors from single-family homes, what the distance is, and also for privacy and landscaping. So I would like you to consider that as you look at the priorities, to have a strategic plan for a transition from high-density housing to a single neighborhood that is right behind it. So I would appreciate it if you take a look at that and consider it. Thank you so much, and all the best for 2024.
Thank you very much. Okay. Since there are no more comments from the public, I'll go ahead and bring this back to council. Who would like to get us started and talk about our priorities for 2024?
I'll start on the condition that if I have more to say, that you might consider letting me. In other words, I'm going to get started, but I'm not convinced. I don't have a real cohesive list of things to say, but I'm willing to start, and then, you know, I might have something else. So... and by your nod, I'll take that as agreement. So I very much appreciate it... well, I appreciate all the public comments, but I really appreciated Mark Steinle's comment. I mean, Mr. Eric Steinle, I know. Because it sort of reflects some of my thinking. So I'm going to start sort of at a high level. So I think as councilmembers, sometimes we do get bogged down in specific decisions, and, you know, whether I agree with the mayor's decision, or one of my colleagues. But really, that's not the key issue. The key issue, I think, is having a framework to make decisions where we have as consistent and a solid approach to it, which is kind of similar to what Eric was saying. And then each and every decision, again, we may or may not agree with, but we've gone through a framework that allows us to consider things sort of as carefully and as objectively as we can. And so I think that's important. And so as I was looking at the table that we all got, which I think, as you said, this is mostly suggested policy considerations, but some are procedure. So to pick up on that, housing element update, I feel we had a recent discussion before the break about ongoing implementation of the housing element is really something the staff has well in queue right now. I mean, we do need to look at the things as it comes forward, but we're not starting from scratch and creating... we're confirming something that we committed to. So is that a goal? I mean, it's a goal that we continue on, the solid path and the framework that's been developed and put in place, but I don't know that that's the same thing as, for example, and I'm not trying to say these are the same level of importance, but like the whole stormwater policy issue we have to sort out for the city. So housing element is marching. There's pieces we need to look at, and obviously, programs that haven't been approved. And Nick has many pages of that for us. Thank you very much, Director Zornz. But... so again, I don't see... so when we have plans, we do have to look at the elements... But, so again, I don't see, so when we have plans, we do have to look at the elements again, but it's not the same as developing policies in areas where we've been missing them or something. So, so I do agree with the high level of, you know, I, I think asset management is a huge thing for us this year. I mean, that's maybe one of the, the biggest. I think community safety, which also ties into asset management, but community safety is very important. And I'm going to remind Councilmember Liang, who had prior interest in doing a study about our law enforcement services, but in conjunction with the town next door, who shall remain nameless. But, and we all said, yes, we agreed that was important, but not in the context of coservice, but we should look at it itself. So I remembered what you said, and I want to bring forward, if we agree that community safety is important, then I think we should consider that idea as a standalone study. So, so I think that's important. But things, things such as business communities, there's always work to be done, but we, again, put a strong foundation in last year when we looked at the permanent parklet program. I was surprised when I drove around town on January, let's say 6th, after the deadline of January 2nd, and most of the parklets were still there. I, I have seen some of them now, some of the wine barrels have moved to the sidewalk, they're no longer in the parking spaces, but, so they, they're looking for some forgiveness on the deadline, okay, that's fine. But, but we've put some things in place, so what, what, you know, so, anyway, I'm not being necessarily very clear here, but some of the things are well on their way. I think housing is well on their way. Again, there's nuances that we need to look at, sometimes it's traffic engineering or other aspects that are specific to particular neighborhoods. But I do see asset management and community safety as particular areas where we haven't done as much work, and that's where I'd like to see some of the focus. The others, I think we've come a long way to defining policies and defining, and there might be projects or priorities within those to continue the, the direction we've set. But I don't necessarily feel that those need, those only need tweaks. But asset management and community safety, I think we can have a broader discussion. So that's, I'll start that.
Thank you. I think, I think that, that's excellent. Who would like to go next? Lisa?
Thank you, Mayor, and, and thanks for that, Councilmember Meadows. You know, I, I appreciate that approach, and I do want to thank Mr. Steinle, we don't need to mention first names, for his comment as well, because I agree that having an overarching or an umbrella policy as a council is what we should do. And then, under that policy, because of our limited budget, because of our limited resources, because of our limited time, that we should identify the specific areas we want staff to focus on and we want to put our budget towards for 2024. Where I slightly disagree with Mayor Meadow, Mayor Meadows, Councilmember Meadows, I know, Councilmember Meadows, is where we talk about things that are already in play, for example, housing, I understand the housing element update is already being implemented, and Mr. Zornz is well on his way in getting a lot of things done. But if we don't make it a priority, then we're not acknowledging the fact that we're going to have a lot of staff, resources, and budget focused on it. And for me, when I think of priorities, it's about where we want our resources, resources to be focused this year. And so I can't imagine not having housing, housing element update implementation as one of our priorities or one of our goals under the umbrella policy that we set. And that goes with other things as well, and, and, you know, I agree, asset management, community safety, and the other six that we, the other four that we, we adopted last year. I think for me, they're the same. We still have the same priorities. What I would like us to consider doing a little bit differently this year is to focus and help staff focus more on, under these umbrella priorities. What exactly do we hope to accomplish this year? Because I think if we don't do that, then at the end of the year, yes, we may be able to check the boxes, say, well, we accomplished all these things and we can fit them under the housing priority. But were those the things that we really wanted to do for our city this year? And I think that's the discussion we need to have so we can give clear direction to staff and say, with your limited resources, this is, these are the projects or these are the items we want you to focus on this year, so we can move those forward. So that's my thinking about how we approach identifying umbrella policy, identifying the priorities that fall under the, the policy, but, but being a little bit more specific about what we want to accomplish this year. Otherwise, we're going to end up with, end of the year, not necessarily accomplishing some of the things that I can personally say, for example, you know, I could look at the Climate Action Adaptation Plan or the Complete Streets Master Plan, and there are many priorities in those plans, and I know we can accomplish all of them, but I'll just use Complete Streets Master Plan as an example, where Safe Routes to School has been part of that plan for a few years, and my preference would be for us to say, under Complete Streets for 2024, I would like our resources and budget to hone in and focus on Safe Routes to School. We have all these maps, let's figure out, there are 10 different maps, let's try to get four done right for 2024. So that's the approach that I think would serve our city well, and at the end of the year, Mayor, you can look back and say, you know, these are the things I was able to accomplish specifically for the community and as a council.
Thank you, very, very well said. Councilmember Liang or Daly?
So my priorities actually coincide with four of the major plans that we have adopted as a council. First and foremost is the housing element, secondly is the Complete Streets Master Plan, third is the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, and fourth is the Downtown Vision. Now, underneath these umbrella headings, I think there's some very important aspects on which we should focus. So with regard to the housing element, I know that it's in progress, I'm glad that it's in progress, but by naming it a, in, in my case, my number one priority, I think we're reinforcing how important it is. And then we can also look at things that may not be spelled out in the housing element that are still reflective of our priority. So, for example, it's my understanding that we haven't completely funded the all-affordable development on Distel, and I would like to see that elevated to the top of the list. Let's get it done, okay? Number two example under housing would be a, a safe parking site here in Los Altos. I have visited one in Palo Alto. It only serves a few families, it serves about eight or 10 families who are vehicle dwellers, more or less living in RVs or campers. And, you know, most of the families that live at that site, they have kids in the local school district, they have a variety of reasons that they want to stay here in the area, but for whatever reason, they're housing insecure. And it may not seem like it really moves the needle when you're talking about finding essentially a parking lot with some, you know, with a bathroom and some other amenities. It may not seem like you're really moving the needle when you're only addressing eight families, but let me tell you, for each one of those families, it is a huge deal, a huge deal. So that's what I have for my number one priority for housing. With regard to the Complete Streets Master Plan, I want to echo what Councilmember Flagler has said, our safe routes to school need attention, right? Not only have we screwed them up in a couple of places, Jarden is a cluster mess and needs to be fixed again, right? And let's try and do it right, maybe the third time's the charm. Homestead, for kids that are going to school in, in the Cupertino Unified District, either high school or middle school, Homestead is a mess, and that can be fixed with some basic street striping. But I've seen, at 3 o'clock in the afternoon when school gets out, I've seen drivers barreling through the bike lane to get around traffic that stopped at an intersection, right? I've seen bicyclists adapt to that by riding their bikes where pedestrians are supposed to be in the crosswalks. So we have to get a grip on our circulation and do a better job with that, and that's my priority number two. Excuse me. With regard to the Climate Action Plan, to some extent, we're limited by the decision in Berkeley with regard to reach codes, and that stuff is kind of on hold, and I'm okay with that until we get some, until the dust settles on that. But there's another aspect of the Climate Adaptation and Action Plan at a high level that we have been underperforming against, and that is the adaptation, right? So when we talk about what are we going to do with stormwater runoff, that fits under that adaptation portion of that plan. There are a number of places where, you know, culverts need addressing, where we, where we're concerned about flooding, and, and I made a big deal of it last year, and I kind of let it slide because, you know, the seasons changed and, and it felt like it was in our rearview mirror, but it's winter again, and we need to know that our power is going to be on. And if it does go out, that PG&E is going to fix the problem right away. I don't want to have to take calls from residents that say, hey, I've had no power for 72 hours, my husband's CPAP machine doesn't work, you know, we're looking at going to get a hotel because we can't stay in our own home. And so we need to address that as well. And sometimes it feels like it's a critical urgent need because, you know, a tree came down or something two blocks away. But it's not only a critical acute need when we have a storm, but it's also a long-term chronic need that we have to deal with. So, and then lastly, the Downtown Vision Plan, you know, the vibrancy of our commercial districts is very important, not only because of the livelihood for some of our residents, but also as amenities for the rest of the residents that live here. And I, I really favor advancing the theater plan, and I would like to see us formulate a plan and coalesce around a direction for a downtown parking facility with a park on top. So those are the things that are most important to me. I would add something that I overlooked that frequently nags at me on council meeting nights, and it doesn't rise to the same level of these high-level goals, but yeah, we invested some money in these council chambers, and it's terrible when I get home to a flood of messages, hey, we can't hear what anybody is saying, the microphones don't work. You know, let's at least get the value of the money we spent in fixed council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. That's enough.
Thank you. I think I agree with some of the points that was made tonight, but that's what our mission statement was for, is that we have to be mindful of our mission statement, and that was, that's the overarching statement that is supposed to help guide us. So I don't think we need another one-sentence catch-all statement. But what I do believe is that our strategic goals that we have here, some of it needs tweaking because as we continue to evaluate some of the needs, some of the mistakes that were made, we need to tweak some of that. What I definitely feel is important as a strategic priority is, and it's, and it's not one of our six, is our fiscal management and responsibility. We were fortunate to have had a city manager help pull us out of our situation that our budgets were in, clean up some things, and we need to make sure that we are always mindful and cognizant of our, our budget situation. And so thank you for that, city manager. Also, having sound fiscal management will also help us be sure we can accomplish all these other goals that are being mentioned. If we're going to go into specifics of housing and stuff, and I agree with what Councilmember Flagler said, we need to put things on our priority or name as a strategic priority because it needs to be always our focus. When we were working on the, the community center, it was always identified because it was to main sure that we maintain that focus, that it is a number one priority that we completed. So that's why when we talk about our public safety infrastructure, it has to be a strategic priority. We have facility reports that have identified that our public safety infrastructure is the worst building. They're taking care of our needs, they're taking care about community safety, they're taking care of our safety on the streets as well. So it has to be a strategic priority. Putting it under just community safety is not sufficient. We need to make sure that we keep, we, that is a top goal, that we look at focus, what is our, our plan to make sure that we can create that strategic plan to allow for the financing of that infrastructure, to allow for that. That's the kind of stuff that needs to be top priority and that we really need to make sure that our, our, our focus is that. These little things like, oh, parking and stuff, yes, that's important, and it's continued things that we have to maintain, but we have to understand, strategic priority is the big picture goal and, and, and what we're going to do to accomplish these goals. So the, the fiscal management is needed to fund all these things, so that is utmost important to be one of our strategic priorities. We can talk about housing element. Yes, housing element and the completion of our housing element is important, but going into the specifics of safe parking, there's a, to me, a broader discussion. There's discussion of maybe transitional housing, working with other agencies like Dignity Moves and should be, you know, a route that we should be considering. We've identified parking structures to be housing sites, but I think we're getting away from what we intended to be a strategic high-level discussion and the guiding principles of where we're going tonight. And that's why it was a little kind of cut-off guard as to how we're going to approach this. And so that's kind of my comments for now, and I'd like to reserve as well, after we continue to discuss, to, to chime back in.
So, so my, thank, thank you. My goal over the year is going to be to try to keep us moving as quickly as possible through our agenda. This is more of a free-flowing type of discussion, this is our retreat. I think that this is setting the course for our car for the year, and it's also informing staff what we're thinking and how we want them to go about performing their own duties. So, so my, my, my expectation is that this is going to be a conversation that continues to go on through the evening. I think that everyone who has spoken so far has made some very good points, and I, I would start with Mr. Steinle. I thought that his comment was, it made me pause and think. Unfortunately, it, it, it's hard to sort of stop the way that I had been thinking for the week leading up to this, but, but I think that, that your suggestion of having one overarching policy and then branching from underneath that has merit. That being said, there, there's not, there's no one right way to establish policies. This council tonight hopefully will establish what we want as our policy or policies in as much detail as we want to give. If you look at the history of how policies have been set by prior councils, some of them have been incredibly detailed. So there've been, there've been goals, and then underneath those goals, there are specific projects, and throughout the year, there'd be kind of a bar showing how many of those projects were, were completed or where they were in process. We've moved away from that in recent councils, and I think it was wise to move away from it, seemed a little bit too much to me like micromanaging, but that's just my opinion. That was not the opinion of prior councils that decided to go that way, and prior councils said that was the way to go. This council may want to adopt something similar to what we did last year. This council- This council may want to get into more detail, may want to get into less detail. I think Councilmember Liang made two very, very important points. And, and one is that without strong financial processes in place, everything else falls apart. We cannot accomplish anything else we want to do. The Vice Mayor, I think, brought up some really important ideas that I agree with, some very interesting ideas. And, and I think that those are, are worthy of our discussion tonight. Last night, I attended the Environmental Commission meeting on their new liaison. And one of the discussions was fleet electrification for the city of Los Altos. We talked about it sort of tangentially when we were looking at getting new police cruisers. And ultimately, the question was, why are we getting cruisers with internal combustion engines? Why don't we get electric cars? And there, there were, there were a lot of reasons to go with one choice as opposed to the other. But one of the most important pieces of information that we got from staff, at least in my opinion, was the city does not have the infrastructure in place to be able to properly service those vehicles. So if we were to get those vehicles, then we got to get the infrastructure. We're going to spend more money. As the city manager has said, we can do everything, we can do anything, but we can't do everything. So if we're going to get electric police cruisers and we're going to get the infrastructure to service it, that money has to come from something else. I continue to believe that when it comes to priority settings, this meeting is 25% of the picture. 75% of the picture comes when we establish the budget. Regardless of what we say tonight, or in our master plans, or in our general plan, if someone wants to find out what really matters to the city of Los Altos or any other agency, they're going to look at the budget. Where you allocate your money is an indication of what you find important. So for me, the purpose of tonight is to put the values together that I'm going to use and I hope that all of us are going to use when we're looking at the budget that comes to us in Mayor Jim. And think, you know, when our thinking of allocating money over the next 12 months, does that align with the policies that we've set tonight? And moreover, I believe that, that staff looks at the policies that we established tonight, those values. And when putting together that budget, they ask themselves a question, not, does it bring Los Altos together or does it put patients first? But does this CIP fit with any of the priorities? Does this CIP, is it contrary to any of our priorities? Uh, that, that, those are the, the high-level questions that I want staff to ask themselves as they're preparing their budget. And that's why I think tonight is important. And that's why I'm, I'm leaning toward Councilmember Flygor and Councilmember Liang when they suggest that we have categories. That being said, um, Mayor Meadows, you, you, I mean, you, you made very good points. The CAP, the Complete Streets Master Plan, the Downtown Vision, tho- those are policies that have been adopted by the council. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. City Manager, but I believe staff looks at those documents as, as council policies. This is what we want to accomplish. I remember in the last council when we were, were debating the, the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, a council member asked, is this an statement of aspirational goals? Or is this going to be considered by staff as policy? And the answer was, it's considered by policy. And that, that answer informed that council member's goal, uh, uh, vote on, it, it informed that council member's vote on the CAP. So, so I think it's important for us to keep in mind that tho- those documents that, that, that Vice Mayor, that, that you mentioned and the projects in them, tho- there, there's no question that those are council policies. And we want staff to do those. Now, when they get done, is going to be up to us. We have our policies, but when are we going to put the money into it? You know, are we going to go forward with a parking lot that has a park on top? And if we are, how much is it going to cost? When do we want to allocate the money to do that? The, those are the questions that ultimately council is going to answer. Uh, and staff will try to tee up for us in the budget process. But overall, that's how this whole thing works. So, I think that kind of has brought us full circle on the overarching issue, which is, do we want to proceed in a, in a manner similar to what we did last year? With the resolution that has four, six, eight, however many, uh, priorities in them? Or do we want to go in a different manner? So then, let me take that straw poll first. How many people would like to do something similar to what we did last year? Councilmember?
I don't know if Councilmember Meadows, you want to go? You haven't.
I, I was actually going to offer a clarification because I don't actually think what I said, that I, I didn't disagree with what my colleagues said. I was just, so, I was just saying some of it's going to be easier or more, or better defined than others where we actually have to roll up our sleeves and start from scratch. That's, that's what I was saying. So I wasn't saying housing element is not important. As a forming, former planning commissioner, I'm always going to say housing is important. Because it is. So, so I, I wanted to make that clarification because I felt that was misunderstood. So I, I do think that coming up with something like we did last year, but, but I, I think this process, and you, you said this, Mayor, this process doesn't operate in isolation of the budget. The budget is where the detail is. And that's, and asset management is actually very financially oriented and the budget, of course. So it's really a two-part process. Because whatever we say here is meaningless until we get to the budget. So it's actually kind of a big gap between now and when we first begin to have those discussions. But again, it's kind of chicken and egg. So I don't disagree with what anyone was saying. I think everyone said, said very good things. So, so I, I personally would be comfortable with doing something like we did last year because it's clear and the detail would come in the budget. I, I, if you just want to do the tally, I'll stop there. I do have other things to say, but I'll, I can say that, I can hold them till later.
Okay, tha- tha- thank you for that, for that clarification. I apologize that I misrepresented what you wanted. And, and I think you, you actually, you started off with a point that, that I thought was very good, uh, which is that it doesn't matter what we say about the HEU. Staff is going to continue to proceed with implementing the HEU. And it's not because we make it a priority or we don't make it a priority. The HEU, I mean, it, it's, it's a part of our general plan. And, and of course, staff is going to act in accordance with the general plan. And staff tells us, more than we tell staff, how important it is to comply with what we promised HCD we would do. So I, it, yeah, Councilmember Flygor.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and just to add to that, but the reason why we do need to make sure the HEU is mentioned as part of our priorities is because we know a lot of resources will be expended towards it. So I want to go back to the approach. And for the most part, I support taking the same approach we did last year. The only tweak I would suggest is for us to be a little bit more specific on how we want to accomplish these goals. I do not want to go back to the multi-page spreadsheet with the different CIPs listed. That's. Right, right. That is not, on the other hand, um, you know, I don't want a situation where come May and June and we're doing our budget, staff, as they should and as they do well, they look at our priorities and say, well, these different CIP projects fall within environmental sustainability. This falls within housing. This is what we're going to allocate funding towards because it does tie in with one of the priorities. Because I do think there are many other ways to accomplish our priorities, different projects, different things staff can work on, different things we can put our money towards. And I think that is our decision to make as a council. So for example, I, I did not go into the detail of, of, of the goals that I came here tonight to support. But the Vice Mayor actually hit three of my five. And I am intrigued by his idea of figuring out how we can move 3-3-0 distill circle forward. So I look forward to that discussion. But for me, Mayor, and it's very similar to what the Vice Mayor said, I, I support doing five priorities tonight. And it's tied into the four policies that we've already adopted. You know, the housing element, it's CAP, Complete Streets, Downtown Vision. And the fifth one would be public safety infrastructure. I do want to address, um, Councilmember Liang's point on fiscal management. To her point and to the city manager's credit, I think that's now below the waterline. I think, or city manager has, and the finance director are managing that at their level and it no longer, not that it's not important. We need to distinguish, distinguish between what's important and what's a priority. I have all the confidence that Mr. England and his team are managing our finances. And so I don't think it needs to be a priority this year, as it has been in the past, where we wanted to, um, you know, put money towards a better finance system and, and the other things that we talked about over the years, building up our reserves. I think that is on track, that is being done, it's now below the waterline. So for me, and I want to be very clear, I do think fiscal management is very important. I just don't think it needs, it will rise to the level for me tonight to be one of our priorities. I think the five that I just outlined are the ones I came here ready to support. I'm open to hearing other suggestions. And then under each of these, I do think it would help staff. I think it would help, um, us accomplish our goals, um, at the end of the year if we do identify Downtown Vision, the parking structure with the park on top with the theater. I support that. I came here prepared to propose that, so I was very happy to hear the Vice Mayor say that. So for each of these big policy, um, areas, what are the things that we want to direct staff when they come back with our budget in May to show us that that is, and they're going to start the process now. You know, that, they're allocating the funds to meet those goals.
I think it's critical that we have fiscal management and responsibility as a priority. Not only does it keep us, um, focused, but it also sends a message to the public to see that. Because that'll help guide the decisions we make. It is great that we're, I'm hearing from my fellow council members that public safety infrastructure will become one of the priorities. I think when we also talked about, you know, how are we going to get, um, community, um, safety as well completed regarding perhaps doing survey? I think we've heard from the city manager that it's going to require a lot of the time of staff. So it's, it's great that we want to do all these things. And it's, that's what I'm concerned about, is naming all these things. But then we're not realistic. Then we're, then we're going to lose, um, um, we're going to, um, go on a different tangent. And that's why when we had the community center always on our priority list, it helped to maintain that. It helped to let staff know this is what's going to, what we got to allocate our staff time and our budget to. And so that's why I feel fiscal management and responsibility is always key. Regarding public safety infrastructure, it's going to take a lot. Because we're going to have to be working with consultants. We're going to be, have to be looking at how we're going to achieve that through a ballot measure. How are we going to, to, to either have, um, work with our financial commission to look again as perhaps maybe we need to take out, um, a different funding options? And, you know, this is going to be a big part of our, our time, as well as staff time. So I think we really have to make sure we understand what we're saying when we want to do stuff. And I mean, I'm all with you with, we want to get a lot done, but we also have to be realistic because we're trying to do it within the year.
Thank you. Um, I, you know, two very important points that I want to respond to. One is if the council wants to make public safety infrastructure a priority, and, and I, I do want to make that a priority. I have some proposed language for that, if, if the majority of us want to do that. Getting back to fiscal responsibility and processes, I, I agree with, with both Lynette and Nisa. I think that Nisa is right in that last year, the city manager and the finance director really took the bull by the horn, so to speak, modernized our processes and put together a, a budget process that was remarkable in its clarity and in our ability to pass it, really, just one council meeting. But I also think that Councilmember Liang i- is right when she says that it's important that we let the residents know that fiscal responsibility is a value that we hold. And one of the reasons that we were elected was to look over and safeguard the city's treasury and how money is taken out of that treasury. We had this discussion last year. And the way we resolved it was by putting into the introductory paragraph a statement that, uh, applies to all of our, our priorities, which is that they will be done equitably, sustainably, and in a fiscally prudent manner. Though, those three values apply to all the priorities. Uh, I think that there was wisdom in doing that because, and, and we ended up doing that because we had those words in every single one of our proposed priorities. And we realized that we, you know, we, we, they, they were appropriate for all those priorities. But it, but it just made sense to us to put it in the introductory paragraph. And in looking at the budget that we passed and at the other, there's going to be projects that the, that staff has brought to council throughout the past year, I think that staff did bring us projects, bring us a budget that was equitable, that was sustainable, and that was fiscally prudent. So I, I would support doing that the same way. And, and I have, I have no problem with the language that we used last year.
Oh, sorry. And, and that paragraph I had written down, it also includes the engaging the community part. So if you recall, wh- once something, we sort of achieved the essence of how to do it or making progress, it can go in the paragraph. It's a value, community engagement, equity, sustainability, and, and fiscal responsibility. That's exactly why we did that. So I just wanted, because I don't think you said the community engagement part and that was important too. So, um, so, a- and if I, can I just make a couple, uh, two more comments, I think? So this gets back to the question of, in my mind, as I'm sitting on council for three years now, I ask myself, what is best for the community? So that, you know, you'd say, what's the one question? Now, of course, there's a lot of disagreement within the community about what's best for the community. But, but our job here is to try to sort through all that and make the decisions as best we can. And I use a family analogy. We love all of our children, right? You know, we, we don't have favorites. We love all of our children. We love the library and the dog parks and the orchard and, you know, and so, so all of the children want as much as they can get out of their parents. Stretching this analogy probably too far. And, um, but it is our job to try to, a, a, a sustainable, equitable community actually has amenities. We, we don't have to have things that everybody uses everything. You know, we try to serve a community broadly. And so that, to me, is the question, what is the best for our overall community? Yes, we need a library and yes, there are dogs. And, and so sometimes, and I won't tell you which, um, thing, which projects, uh, you know, sometimes I personally don't care for something, but I'm going to support it because as a fully-fledged community, I won't tell you which project. Be- because a community needs to support it, all its members as best it can. I mean, you know, maybe we're not going to have, you know, skate park is not something we can do right now or whatever, you know? So I'm not trying to put more things on the list. But that, to me, is sort of the overarching goal. And I will make one statement, which may not be very popular. But I actually think our, um, mis- mission statement is very narrow. It needs modernizing and it's not inclusive. I mean, it's, well, it used to be up, but it's, it's a good, uh, you know, a good place to live and raise a family, I think, is kind of the essence of it. And, but we're more inclusive than that. What about the people work, who work here? What about those who want to make this, uh, to age in place? What about, um, what about our staff? I mean, there's, there's just. I mean, there's, there's just, there's so many dimensions that our mission statement doesn't begin to encompass. And when we went through the process arriving at the resolution, we, we grappled with and we all shared the values of trying to support a commu, our community, even in difficult situations, even in painful situations where we couldn't necessarily all agree on things. So to me, our mission statement doesn't really describe adequately what we're trying to do when we sit up here. And so I just, I'm not putting a plug to necessarily redo the mission statement. Though one could make an argument for that. Because I, I don't think it's broad enough, inclusive enough, and anything else enough either. But anyway, so that is my overarching focus as we do this. Our community broadly, how can we support all our children? And, um, and, and really, how can we try to open it up? So even when we don't agree, we can be in the same room and listen to each other. Now I'm done.
Thank you. And if, if you are making a, a motion for a future agenda item, I, I would, I would second it.
So moved and.
Is there, is there a third?
Okay, so the reason why I felt that asset management and responsibility is more important than just having it in the introductory paragraph. It's just that introductory paragraph kind of gets glossed over. And I just feel that we need to have asset management and responsibility as a strategic priority. And we need to have language behind it. It sends a strong statement to our community. This, 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 these items that we're listing is, is the foundation of what we're working with. And that's why that will help to guide if we also list public safety infrastructure. It speaks to that. So I think it's important that we have it listed as well as one of our strategic goals. Because at any time, our budget can, can go sideways again. And we need to make sure that it doesn't. And making sure that it is a strategic goal and continues to also be a high level strategic goal will speak to everything else that we need to do.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone who does not want asset management to be one of our priorities for the coming year? Vice Mayor? Okay, so, so two councilmembers do not want it to be, alright.
And, and, and if I may, Mayor, I assume when you ask asset management, you're referring to the language we used last year. I do support having public safety infrastructure as one of our priorities. And I do want to go back to something Councilmember Liang said, where we were very intentional. I was on council, so was Councilmember Liang with the community center. Where instead of listing all Lacy and all the different city-owned buildings, we focused on the community center as Councilmember Liang said. And so for me, focused on this year, asset management is too broad and we don't have the resources or the funding to achieve asset management. What I think is a better approach is to have it as public safety infrastructure. And it appears we have majority or more, if not unanimous, supporting that. And that's what the, the, the priority should be, not asset management, which I think is, you know, vague and broad, and, and what exactly do we want to accomplish this year?
Uh, Vice Mayor, do you want to say anything about asset management?
Sort of. So I think we have a conundrum here that I've encountered in the corporate world when I've gone in to consult with boards and, 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 uh, you know, management teams. And we do this corporate sensing and we come up with a new mission, vision, values, goals, objectives, right? And the reason I bring it up here is not because I want to undertake that kind of exercise right now, but to talk about where mission, vision, values, goals, and objectives sit relative to one another, right? I, I listed them in order, descending order of their hierarchy. And it's, it's perfectly appropriate, for example, and I think we're probably reaching consensus on that, to, if you're at the goals level, the level above that is your values, right? So it's perfectly fine to restate specific values in your opening paragraph and say all these goals need to be pursued within the parameters of these values. I do support revisiting the, the, the mission at some point. As any organization should periodically, just to make sure that it's in touch with, with the stakeholders at that time. That said, I, I think, I'm not really sure that asset management is a goal. I, I, I think it's, uh, I think it's a value. I think when you talk about specific assets, it becomes an objective. So it either sits above or below where we are right now, in my opinion.
I think asset management is important to stay on. One of the things that we had a problem with is failing to allocate funds and priorities to our assets. That's why it ended up the way it did. And so we still have a long way to go regarding all of our facilities. We have, um, much of our facilities. Just because we're upgrading and doing things here and there for Grand Park, it still needs a lot of work. You got to look at our facilities at Shell Park. We still have a lot of things we need to take care of. It doesn't just mean buildings. We have a lot of other assets we have to maintain. So I think that asset management is important to remain here. I think our public is, 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 is aware of that. And they don't want us to go down the same path that we've been. We're, we're, we're making improvements, we're getting there. But asset management is a clear, a strategic priority that needs to, I think, continue to remain on.
Uh, thank you. And I, coming into tonight, I think I felt the way you did. When, when I see asset management, what I'm thinking is, too often, the city has a history of not maintaining our assets, but waiting for things to fail and then scrambling to try to fix them. And I think we can all agree that that, that has not served us well at, at this point in time. But in listening to, to Nisa and Pete, uh, and in reading the text behind asset management, that's, that's not what it says. What, what, what I'm reading into it is not what the text says. And I'm, I'm thinking back to the budget and the CIPs that were approved and accomplished over the past year. I, I don't think any of that would have changed because of, of that stated, stated priority. So I, I would be okay eliminating it under that, that logic. Councilmember Flagler?
Well said, Mayor, and I'll just add two things to that point. One is, again, going back to the great work of our city manager and finance director last year, they have now set up a specific fund related to our infrastructure that we all supported in our budget last year. So that's happening. And two, I trust our staff that at a minimum, they'll be maintaining our infrastructure until we can then make the next thing a priority, whatever it is, Shell Park, Grand Park, whatever it is. But to quote Councilmember Liang, we can't do everything, right? And just saying asset management, we're, we're going to be left with nothing. We need to zoom in, focus on something, and put our resources behind it so we can get it done.
I, I just, I, I'm torn and I completely get everything that's been said. I, I just think what, what, the way asset management is written, it's really talking about CIP projects. And so I, I, I don't know if there's a way of capturing, and I'm not trying, uh, because I, I agree, I don't want to throw it out, because public safety infrastructure is not the only asset that we need to manage. Um, and so perhaps there's a way of getting at, um, you know, the CIP and sustainable practices to assigning goal. I mean, again, it was in the budget process. We did the CIP in the budget, all in three hours, if I recall, thanks to the, the good work of staff. But I, I don't, I don't, it doesn't have to be phrased this way, but I just don't want to throw out all the, the CIP stuff. And maybe we need a process where we'll prioritize things that would compete for that budget or something. So maybe it's a process. I, I agree, it should be stated somewhere, and I don't, I, I don't know how. Because everything that everyone said makes sense, but I don't know how to pull it together.
Pete, I saw the gears turning, did you want to say something?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Liang?
I think earlier when I, we started this process, I said some of the things need to be cleaned up. And I don't think this needs to be thrown out, but it needs to be cleaned up. And if we're cleaning up, I don't know if we want to, um, because if, if I knew that, that we were, I don't know, I would have came more prepared to rewrite this. So either that, or we continue this, this item, or we work together to rewrite it so we can continue to have it on. Because I think it is important that we keep it on, but it's not written for this year. And the direction we're going, going because of the improvements that our city manager made. But I think it's important to consistently maintain and provide maintenance on our buildings and infrastructure.
Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm still not understanding what we're talking about when we say asset management and how we measure that for next year, honestly. Just, you know, um, I expect staff will continue to maintain and manage our infrastructure. We have a CIP list, a lot of those are in flight, they're happening. And so for purposes of this discussion, and if I were staff, I would need more clarity on when council says to us asset management is a priority, what does that mean? And what do you want us to focus on? And I'm still struggling, and that's why, you know, I get the CIP, but that list is long. And so are we saying anything on the CIP should be under asset management? And that to me gives no direction or clarity to staff. So I'm still struggling to understand if we have asset management remain on this list, what are we really referring to and what direction are we giving to staff?
Yeah, I, 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 I do find myself persuaded by that. And I'm glad you reminded me that staff has put together a separate fund, because I had forgotten that when I was doing my research. And that the establishment of that fund alone, I think qualifies as checking off that priority number one, uh, staff mobilize, for lack of a better word, in, in our resolution from last year. So I'm, I'm finding myself persuaded by what you're saying. Sally?
Councilmember Liang wants to go, yeah.
I think what we can ask is, if you don't mind, because our city manager, when he wanted to get our city into, um, into order, he really emphasized the importance of maintaining our assets. And so if you don't mind, could you help speak to this on when you prior used to emphasize how important it was to maintain our facilities? And that would fall under this asset management?
I, I think how we prioritized this as part of the budget process was more of an overarching topic and less of, um, specific sites. But we had, at the time, if council remembers, right, we had, went through the budget process. We said that all, all of our play structure equipment in the park is beyond its useful life. City Hall needs to be updated, we need more staff space. We had to, um, figure out a solution for the EOC. And we had to maintain our streets at about two and a half million dollars a year to meet the council strategic priority on PCI. And historically, we had not been doing that. So under asset management, we brought those items forward, continued the street funding, and then created the, um, the maintenance fund in hopes that we can fund the depreciation of city assets every year. So we'll be able to maintain them over time. So we made great strides in that last year based on the council direction. But a lot of those decisions that we, we made, they weren't really choices we could make. We, we almost had to do all of those. So I do think moving forward, council will have an ability to be, to maybe provide more direction on specific assets, how they're maintained, how they want to be developed, and what, what are the next steps that we want to take when they become a priority? So I actually think the, the discussion is capturing really well what we went through last year.
So with that said, I think that's why the, the definition or the language behind asset management needs to be changed. But asset management should still remain on the list.
I was going to say that I'm willing to suggest that as it was written last year, we accomplished that. I, I don't want to throw out the, the, how different the process was, the, um, the budget and the capital improvement. So we did set clear expectations through the budget process and allocated the funding to support maintenance improvement of city facilities and infrastructure. So, and that process actually will stay with us, we, we know that. So I'm willing on that basis to let number one go as written. But I do think there are assets that we know we have to spell out. One is the public safety infrastructure question. And the other is we need to make a decision on everyone's favorite Halsey House. I think we're going to have that this year. So there, those are two assets, and there might be more. But I think it, it should go without saying that the process we went through last year, which was successful, we want to keep doing that, and that will allow us to manage our facilities and infrastructure. And, um, yeah, so there, that's about there.
So, so I think I'm hearing four councilmembers say let asset management go. Is that, Pete, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so, so let's move on to number two, business communities. Any thoughts on, on this priority?
I agree, whatever Pete said earlier, I agree.
I was just going to reiterate that using the downtown vision as the goal, implementing that plan or the elements of that plan that are tenable right now is a good way to state the goal.
Uh, I, I, I agree with that. I think that staff started doing that last year. I think we're still on the right track. There were some things you mentioned that I think it's a little too early for us to commit to. You know, the downtown, I, I love the idea of the downtown theater, but we have to wait for the studies that the working group is working on before I think we can commit to that as a priority. But, but the downtown vision, which of course is council policy, reiterating that we're expecting staff to, to pay attention to it and focus on it, I think is appropriate. And I think that the language that exists does that.
Mayor, may I ask a question? Has housing element refer, there's a lot of work going on in downtown to support the housing element too. So does that, that doesn't necessarily fit in a description of business communities, but, um, you know, the parking study, et cetera, et cetera. So they're, they're kind of like this. So I just wanted to say, the downtown vision, the housing element, they're all part of, you know, where we're, where downtown might go, among, as well as the other things, so.
I, very well said. Are you, are you suggesting? Very well said. Are, are you suggesting putting that incorporating language like that into the text?
Well, when it's labeled business communities, then it doesn't necessarily work. So, so if we want to have housing, maybe it fits when we get to number five, and I haven't read it with that in mind. But we, I think the housing element effect on the business districts, plural, because we, you know, we've done rezoning. So, so whether that is part of business communities or part of housing, I think it's a big thing we'll probably be looking at somehow during the course of the year.
Yeah, I, I think what I'm hearing you say is that, that the downtown vision and, and the housing element update, which, which is entwined with it, at least with respect to downtown, tho, those are, those are two major policies that are far broader than the business communities. So is that the right place to put them?
Right.
Or redefine it.
Yeah, I'm not sure where it fits best or redefine, yeah.
I suggest that for the goal that is either about the business communities or the downtown vision, what we might say is that we have a goal of promoting vibrant commercial districts in our community. So it does transcend just what the downtown vision offers, because there are some other really vital commercial districts that shouldn't be treated like stepchildren.
I agree. I, I like the plural. I like business communities, because we do have different business communities. And as we heard from public speakers, and as we know, our housing is also not just downtown, but it's also in close proximity to the other commercial districts. So they actually go hand in hand. Later, as a future agenda item that I'll propose, you know, it will relate to the fire that happened, which affected a different commercial district. And so if this council, for example, were to decide to do something to support that business area, it would tie into supporting business communities. And so I, I support what the vice mayor said about figuring out how to redefine it, so that it includes all our business communities. But it ties in with housing, as Councilmember Meadows is saying, because that's why we're going to focus on the implementation and where our housing this year, or rezoning and changing our laws, we'll focus on those areas. So I do think they go hand in hand. And it's a matter of redefining it and making sure it's plural as to business districts, because lucky, it's like, they, they're all involved.
The other thing I would note is that many of these goal areas would overlap on some kind of Venn diagram. Clearly, environmental sustainability and community safety have a lot of overlap as well. So I don't think it's, I don't think it's necessary that we make sure that there's some sort of discreet separation between each of these goals.
I think how it's worded for business communities is the focus of our business communities. It is already a plural. I don't think it needs to be changed. But what I'm hearing, like from Councilmember Meadows, when we talk about housing, that's why one of our strategic priorities has to speak to the implementation of our housing element, because it will speak to all aspects of housing, whether it's integrated in our business districts, whether it's integrated in our, in our high transit corridors and everything else. So I think that this is fine the way it is, but I think we need to create another strategic priority speaking to the impl, you know, implementation of our housing element.
Just a suggestion, just listening to Councilmember Liang and going back to the word, the vice mayor usage was vibrant. I think saying vibrant communities as the priority would capture both business and housing. Just throwing that out there, instead of saying business communities, it's just say vibrant communities, because housing will increase vibrancy, and there are other things we would do to support these business communities to increase vibrancy. So just throwing out a suggestion, instead of saying business communities, vibrant communities, and it would capture housing as well.
Again, you're. You're very persuasive. You're, no, no, you're.
You don't like it, Mayor?
I, I do really like it. But I, but I also feel like we need to have our business communities. I, I think we need to acknowledge our business communities.
Call out.
Yeah. And I, I, you know, look, we're, we're 90% residential, and, and the business communities that we have, you know, for the most part, with a few exceptions, they're not designed to bring in people from all over the Bay Area. They're designed to serve the residents of Los Altos and the surrounding cities. And, and because of that, it's so important, I think, that the council keep in mind that, that, you know, they're, they're looking to us for leadership and protection and, and, you know, being included as part of the community. And I, and I think back to what Sally mentioned earlier, which is that our, our city's mission statement doesn't mention businesses at all. And, and I think that, that we have an opportunity in, in setting our priorities to somehow really specifically state that affirmatively the city council appreciates and respects the businesses, and that we want it, we, the, the needs of our businesses will be included in our policy deliberations, and they matter to us. So that, that's, that, that's why I'm torn.
No, and I, and I appreciate that, Mayor. And I could go back to business communities. I was just trying to merge the different comments that were made. And of course, we want to make sure that the business, as one of our children, understands we love them too. Right? Okay.
Yeah. And I, I, I love the word vibrant. I love vibrancy, and that is exactly, I think, what the effect of, of the development of new housing downtown is going to bring. So I would love doing, to incorporate that. But Sally, you had a comment?
Yeah, I was just going to say, we can keep business communities. I think the simple solution to this discussion is that we'll support the different business communities in an effort to help them thrive, implementing specific projects and/or elements of the housing element update, and the downtown vision plan, and launching initiatives. So I would just do that there. And I, I want to point out, and we haven't even talked about number five, which is housing and the housing element and all that. So the housing element is not just about housing. We've rezoned for mul, mixed use. And so that's where the housing and the business all comes together and creates a, a kind of vibrancy that we don't have a lot of yet. So it's very important, I think. And maybe we do, as I said, with the business communities, but that's up to my colleagues, and then tweak housing when we get there to reflect a similar perspective.
I, I like both those ideas. I would support them, most like Pete does as well. Nisa? Yeah, okay. So staff, are we good? Okay. Let's move on to community safety.
For, for number two, I simply said, in, let's see, support the different business communities, including implementing specific projects and/or elements of the housing element update and the downtown vision plan and launch. I'm just adding sticking and the housing element update in there. And then we haven't tweaked number five yet, but again, I think that they, they work together, so.
I just wanted to make sure I got it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Did you propose not including launching initiatives to bolster the other business communities?
No, I was just trying to be brief in my.
Okay, so keeping that, okay. Okay, so I think we have consensus on that. Let's move on to community safety. Any thoughts on that goal?
So Mayor, I don't know if the vice mayor, you know, this ties in with Complete Streets Master Plan. And I remember the discussion last year, and that's why we specifically called out Complete Streets Master Plan. But we didn't want to limit community safety to the Complete Streets Master Plan. My preference this year is to actually call out specifically safe streets, as opposed to community safety, because we're going to hopefully have a separate public safety infrastructure item. Because I think when we did community safety last year, we were trying to do every form of safety. And my preference would be to do street safety this year, separate from public safety.
I just want to make a, a brief point, and I'm not up to speed in one of my new liaisons roles, so, yeah, the Complete Streets. But there's more than just the Complete Streets Master Plan. There's the other plans, and we've talked about them. So that's all, so it's not just that plan. It's, as you say, the whole.
Oh, we have a lot of plans.
Yeah, we have a lot.
Stop sign plan.
Oh.
Circulatory element.
Yes. Yes, exactly. So all that. So we need something broader than complete streets. We need, yeah, okay, got it. That was my point.
Circulation, safety and efficiency captures it all. And, and it's just a few words, but it's a huge problem.
But the point is that you can say that, but I think it doesn't, if you say that, it's already covered in some of the other plans that we're, we haven't even touched yet. And those are the other plans that we need to get to as well. Those are older plans, and yes, Complete Streets Master Plan, that needs to be tweaked, too, because as you can see, it created the problem on Jardin. So we really need to approach the other plans that we need to, and that will speak to circulation and everything. And we haven't even, even touched that or started.
What, what isn't covered by circulation, safety and efficiency?
But that's not a plan. That's in a traffic calming management plan that we have as well. And that speaks to the circulation as well.
So I just want to jump in and say, I, I don't think it's fair to blame the Complete Streets Master Plan for Jardine's restriping failing to meet the community's goals. Where, where circulation, safety, and I'm sorry, what was the other, safety and.
So just to clarify that.
Efficiency.
I'm not blaming them, but I think that some of our plans still need to be revisited and tweaked.
Great. Circulation, safety and efficiency implies a, a focus of energy on transportation, and not just vehicular transportation, but pedestrians and any other mode of, of moving. When I read what we wrote for community safety in our goals for last year, and perhaps my colleagues look at it differently, the fir, I interpret the first sentence as referring not to, to street safety, but to police, to first responder services. So circulation, safety and efficiency, I don't think captures that.
I think we're proposing for this year.
So, so.
Getting rid of this.
Okay.
And doing street safety, and then public safety. And how the vice mayor is defining street safety is using the circulation.
Okay. Then, then what, what if we do this? What if we, we change the title from community safety to circulation, safety and efficiency? We cut out the first sentence, and we can bring that back in when we talk about public safety.
I would like to add a sentence or, or two. I think we should emphasize our safe routes to school. And if I could add one more sentence, it would be to cooperate better with our school district partners. We do have a rather urgent issue that'll come before us with regard to, for example, crossing guards. So part of the solution to that particular challenge is actually cultivating a better working relationship with our, our partner jurisdictions.
I'm, I'm good with your first suggestion. As a general policy, I like your second suggestion. I'm a little nervous about putting that down as direction to staff, because I think, I think it opens up a lot of nuances that, that are difficult to anticipate.
We're not totally in control of it either, right? You know, there are other parties to that goal, per se.
So Mayor, if I could clarify, what part are you in agreement with, and what part you have reservations to what the vice mayor said?
I'm, I'm in agreement with his sentence regarding safe routes to school. I, I think that, that, that is one of the most. The primary role of government is public safety, first and foremost. And safe routes to school is public safety. And I am 100% okay with this council letting staff know that safe routes to school needs to be an absolute priority, and, and, and the budget should reflect that. I do want to point out that I don't think this is something that, that staff has neglected. I think that staff has spent a lot of time on this. I don't know if everyone in the room is aware of it, but there, there's even an app to help students and, and parents find the best routes to get to their school. So an awful lot of work has gone into this above and beyond just the Complete Streets Master Plan, which of course is also a statement of policy. But, but, but communicating to the community and to staff that we want to make sure that the CIPs focus on this as well, I'm, I'm absolutely okay with, with putting that into the, the goals.
One, one word of caution, though. I, I think there's consensus that this is, that in addition to this goal, we should specify an elevated priority for safe routes to school. But when the issue of crossing guards comes back to us, and we look at what we allocated initially, and what the current costs are, if we have said that our absolute priority is safe routes to school, we may find ourselves kind of boxed in with regard to appropriation for that. So I don't know how to treat that. It's incredibly important, but I don't want the goal to be interpreted by the community that we're going to go to any expense necessar, you know, be, because we have a number of priorities that also have to be funded.
That's, that's well taken. It's not, we certainly don't want to say sky's the limit. And I think we also don't want to relieve the school districts from any responsibility that they have with respect to safe routes to school. So, so softening the language, I think is appropriate. I have some ideas, but Nisa, I'll go to you.
No, I just want to support adding the language safe routes to school. And I don't think it necessarily dictates how we're going to achieve that goal, and how much money we're going to put towards it. I do think it's an important message. You know, we've all walked Los Altos. We've all talked to many residents, and I will tell you, safe routes to school is always one of the top priorities for our community. So we need to make sure it is spelled out, and how we approach it, how we fund it, what we decide to do to reach this goal, that's a future discussion. But I do, I do want to support adding that language, calling out safe routes to school as part of the school.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm with you. And as a parent who has a kid who acts like he's indestructible as he walks to school, this, this is hitting home. Councilor?
I think that if we're going to change the language, it's important to identify that we identify our traffic calming master plan. We call it out because that needs to be updated. We updated our Complete Streets Master Plan. We have to, this, it will all speak to safe routes to school. Because if you have traffic calming master plan updated, our collector street traffic calming plan updated, as well as our neighborhood traffic calming plan updated, these are all going to speak to it. And it also identifies that all of these plans will be a priority that we have to work on to, to get it up to date.
Thank you for that. Mr. City Manager, I, I know that staff is, is in the process of, of putting together a procedure to update our general plan. Is, is the traffic calming master plan something that's in staff's vision for the next year?
What, what are we updating in the, the elements?
I have fear of being tangential for your conversation. We have already released a safety element, our. We have already released a safety element, RFP, we have, we are reviewing, we are meeting with the consultants this week to vet out who we think is the best person to be able to unearth our very ancient safety element, and bring us up to today's modernization with all of the nuances to that. The reason why I'm giving you kind of a little bit of a narrative explanation is that the housing element requires the city, all cities in Los, or California, to then amend their safety element upon adoption or concurrently. So we now have to statutorily do a safety element. We then are, upon the amendment of two or more general plan elements, have to then create either policies in each individual element, or a standalone element for environmental justice. At that point, we're gonna be, really where we're gonna be sitting to really amend the circulation, or what some people call the mobility element, or transportation element. So, the priority needs to be for the safety component, the safety element first, because we have to actually assess some of the main critical emergency roads and exits of the actual city. But fundamentally, I would not be supportive as, as a technical professional of amending documents to do an update to a traffic calming master plan until we have done the major overhaul of our circulation element. All at least, also inform the council is, at some point in time, the, the City of Los Altos took final action to adopt integrated elements of the general plan, and have blended together elements. There should be seven standalone elements, and we do not have some of them, because they've been incorporated and blended into one. So it is very convoluted, so we would need to update our, our circulation element before we were to do another standalone implementing document, such as a traffic calming or Complete Streets Master Plan. So, I know that's really long-winded, but I'm hoping that we would be able to release an RFP for that component of the general plan upon adoption of the safety element, which should be, I would imagine, Q3 or very early Q4 calendar year of, of 2024.
Yeah, there you go. Is statutory here?
So, Mayor, and, sorry, the reason, uh, thank you, Nick, the reason I wanted him to answer the, the order we have to do it in, when, when we're talking about complete streets, community safety, safe streets, historically, when we look at how we've done traffic calming or integrated traffic management plan, we have not done this in a way that takes into account the totality of the needs in the city, and oftentimes, we've done it in a way that's intention with public safety or emergency response. So there are certain elements that we're talking about here, particularly in the Complete Streets Master Plan that are, that are good and can be implemented, the safe routes to schools are good and can be implemented. Some of the other elements, I think we need to look at in, in a much more holistic and thoughtful way before we, we try and continue implementing them.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. City Manager and Director Zorn, so, so I think staff has pretty persuasively explained, with new information to me, anyway, that prioritizing the circulatory master plan, or the circulatory element, and the traffic calming master plan out of order is probably not the best way for us to proceed. So that brings us back to what we have right now for community safety. We're gonna, I think there's consensus to change the title to circulatory safety and efficiency. The first sentence will be stricken, we'll leave the remaining text, we're gonna add in language with respect to safe routes to school, and I think that's it, yes?
Sounds like we should have a sentence that says we need to do a safety element.
No.
Statutorily.
Well, the sentence that talks about, speaks to the circulation element, that we were gonna move forward on that prior to initiating the traffic calming and traffic management plan.
So this goes back to, I think, what, what Sally was saying at the beginning of our discussion, I mean, things that we have to statutorily do don't need to be prioritized. And in fact, we didn't even realize that these were priorities until staff told us. So, so I don't know that, that adding it in to vibrant commercial, uh, excuse me, to circulatory safety and efficiency is, is useful.
You're probably right, Mayor, because if we pursue those things that we have to do statutorily, they're still coming under the umbrella of circulatory safety and efficiency. There's nothing that degrades the, the goal by pursuing that statutory requirement.
I think, I think that's well stated.
And it says other plans. I think we're...
Okay. Okay, are we ready to move on to the next one? Well, let's see, it's nine o'clock, do you guys wanna keep going, or do you wanna take a break?
Yeah, I'd like to take a break.
Okay, let's take a ten-minute break. Oh, and, and we will finish our agenda tonight.
Recording stopped.
Well, Daphne, Daphne, Daphne started it. She came to the bath. She sent out, she went around and put things in everybody's mailbox. Because of course she didn't have her email addresses. And we got together at her house, and then we, you know, we would get together at her house, and then the last one was at my house. And, um, it worked.
Oh, okay.
Great. Well, you know, people who want to get to know each other, it's definitely a tough way to get to know each other. And it's mutual, you know, like you share information. We, you know, everybody kind of knows, we've got what resources that are, you know, not everyday resources. So that if we have to, uh, you know, we can share. I'm always plugging certain, um, training because I go around and say, "Do you really want this seventy-six-year-old woman with two artificial needs to be the person who's going to sit here?"
Sit here, right.
"Or do you want to go get some training?" I mean, I'm not training all of it, but it might take me a while to curl up the hill or down the hill to come to my neighborhood.
I know your neighborhood.
Okay, yeah, so, yeah. Okay, so you go, I'm at the top of that hill, and...
I made it to the same place that that's why I'm staying.
Well, you know, people use our hill for, uh...
To train?
To train, they do, yeah. It's, it's, you know, it's also a great place to see the, the toy department. So, uh, I'm there. But, yeah, Gary, that's great, and anything I can do to help you, I'd be happy to. Uh, female, just on a traditional, I know I do on you.
No, I think if you, I, I, I'm, I'm both kind of, uh, the, 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 yeah.
Sure.
And I think it's, it's more of a range.
Yeah, that's sort of smart.
Well, yeah, but I was thinking that's part. Well, yeah, Robin, Robin Abrams has a big party.
Isn't Humphrey so cute?
He is so adorable. He is so mellow.
He usually stays in my office. There's a...
Oh, really?
I gave him all of that stuff as much, the bed, the toys.
Yeah, they like all their, um, yeah.
I buried his toy chest, and I picked from the bottom all the ones he doesn't play with, and he sat there. "Why are you taking my toys?"
And they, they, they gravitate towards like the smell of other dogs.
So I gave him my, my old dog's whole bed and stuff, yeah.
That's cute.
I love that.
Almost looks too small though for him.
Yeah.
He needs a new, yeah.
My old man is having surgery on Thursdays.
Oh, why?
He's gonna have, he's got some osteoarthritis. Trying to see if they can...
Oh.
Wolfgang2242 on Instagram.
Recording in progress.
Okay. Let's go back on the record, so to speak.
2242 Melissa.
So far, I think that we have done a pretty good job getting through our, our goals for the next year. I know that last year at this time, I think we were in the community center, there was a power outage. Hopefully the power will stay, uh, uh, with us tonight. Let's, uh, let's see if we can finish this up. So, the next goal that we have to look at is environmental sustainability. Who wants to get us started with, uh, discussion about that goal?
I will, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Nisa.
Let me find my notes. So as I said, um, before the break, I also had this as a proposed, um, priority for this year for council again. Um, but the approach I was going to suggest, um, is a little bit different. Where we actually identify and give guidance to staff on how we want to accomplish this priority. Um, you know, we talked a couple of times tonight about the budget process last year, which I agree was done well. Um, but I remember coming into that budget meeting, and I had a list of things I wanted to suggest, um, that we allocate funding towards. And we never, we were never able to get to that, and that's fine, but I saved it up for today. Um, and so one of the things I, I really want us to discuss as a council is allocating funds to have incentive programs for our residents. Um, we've talked about this over the years, and I think we need to put some money behind it. Where if we're serious about moving our community forward, we've heard over the years that funding and the cost of doing this is a, is prohibitive and a big hindrance to a lot of our residents actually moving forward. And I know there are several other cities that have different, um, incentive programs. And so I would love for us, and I know it's also in the cap where they suggest different ways we can accomplish this. But I would love for us to focus this year on incentives and educational programs. Um, to the vice mayor's point, there may be other things that I personally would love for us to still pursue this year, but there may not be support, and there may be other reasons why it's not advisable for us to pursue it. But I do think there are things in the cap that we can focus on, and I do think the incentive programs is the way for us to really help our residents and respond to what I think we've heard from a lot of them about we support, you know, environmental sustainability as a priority. We would love to do more, but it's expensive, we don't know how to do it. And I really think it's important for a city, if we believe that climate change is real and we want to play our part in addressing it, I think we need to put our money where our priority is and start funding some of these efforts.
Thank you, and I, I love what you said. Uh, climate change is real, and I firmly believe that giving incentives to people and to convince them to change their behavior is the way to go. And if, if anyone in Sacramento is listening, incentives, incentives. Um, do you want to talk about any specific plans that you wanted to include, or should I go and get other, other council members?
Down to Mayor Alfie, one is the water, um, leader.
Sally?
So, I'll be interested to hear more because it sounds to me, I assume you're not saying we will pay residents? I mean, there's got to be something else that rebate. Well, again, so we'll, we'll talk about that. I'm not understanding how we would do that, nor necessarily how we would fund three-three-zero distal, but that's another question. But on the environmental sustainability, I agree there, there's obstacles, and, and so we should try to find a way to rebate. I think that also applies to the discussion that we started before the break on the tree, the trees. Because, um, you know, trees that need to come out, um, it's very expen, you know, all the issues we discussed when we talked about the trees as well, where it's too expensive for some residents to take out trees that were dead or dying, or, and so they put it off. And, you know, so how do we want to incent? I, I think it's more broadly than, uh, you know, that, that's actually in the sustainability category as well, our urban canopy. Um, so I, I would just broaden it to include that because the last thing we want is people leaving dead trees because they can't afford to take them out, and then they cause damage or injury. Um, you know, that just is not good.
Councilmember?
So, um, see, this is where I get a little bit confused. Because then, we didn't want to put fiscal management as a strategic priority because we've identified it in our introductory paragraph. So isn't sustainability already identified in our, um, introductory paragraph? And yet, we still want to maintain this environmental sustainability. So I kind of feel like sometimes we contradict ourselves in our actions and speak one way. But if we're going to continue to pursue this and keep it on here, which is fine, um, I think it's important that we include or add environmental slash historical stewardship. Because of all, and our historic resource is set for in-go's and the general plan and our certified local government status, I think that would fall under environmental sustainability. I think it's also important that when we talk about the climate action and adaptation plan, we should also identify the Muenho. You know, because I think it's important that we not only just talk about, um, that, we also have to talk about the water aspect and how...
Sorry to interrupt, but my, my understanding was that Muenho is, is at best right now stalled. Is, is, is that correct?
No.
Uh, at the, the county level, yes, right now Muenho's stalled. Um, there are other, uh, low-impact development, water, water-wise things. Uh, but right now Muenho as a, a policy is stalled at the county level.
Okay, thank you.
And is that with the Water District that you're saying it's stalled?
Uh, I could give a, a more comprehensive update, um, if council would like.
Okay, yes, please.
We'll, we'll send an email out to council.
So it's stalled? Okay. Okay.
Yep.
So, um, if it's not stalled, then I, I think it's, needs to be included here. So, until we find that information out, I, I think that we need to come back, if, if, if need to, to include that as well.
So I, I, I know it's not on the Environmental Commission's work plan, uh, the draft work plan that they were discussing last night. And I don't believe it's because the Environmental Commission is not interested in it. My understanding is just, is, is that it was, it was stalled at the county level, and so long as, as it's in that sort of limbo, there, there's not a lot that, that cities can do with it. And that being the case, I, I would not want to put Muenho into a priority, but that's, that...
I can understand that, but if it, if it's not stalled, I think it's important that it be included.
Right now, the, the update is, uh, we, we reviewed the 2019 Model Water Efficient New Development Model Code and Cost Effectiveness Study. Research neighboring jurisdictions to assess viability of adoption in Los Altos. Currently, Valley Water needs to update the model ordinance if other local jurisdictions want to adopt that, and it's on hold with them right now. Once they've done that, then, um, we can move forward if council wants to. But right now, it's on hold at their level.
Okay, so thank you, councilmember. I heard that you want to add historical, and if not Muenho, something related to water management. Um, anyone else? Please.
So there's a number of, of, uh, things that we're not necessarily putting in here that, that are at sort of a similar level of detail, um, all of which are important, but not necessarily urgent to be included in this goal. For example, our urban forest plan and some of the other things that the Environmental Commission is, is, is working on. Uh, I definitely don't think we should conflate historical preservation, uh, with conservation. Uh, those are different things, really. Uh, and, and I would be open to a discussion of having that as a separate goal, for sure. We have some wonderful historic resources in this community. But for this, for this environmental sustainability goal, yes, we do talk about sustain, we do potentially talk about sustainability in the opening paragraph. I think we've more or less agreed on that. But, um, it's one thing to look at all of your actions through a sustainability lens, and it's another thing to take specific actions to promote sustainability. And that's kind of parsing words, but I think that's what justifies having both the sustainability value presented in the opening paragraph and having a specific goal. Now, what I would say for this specific goal is that we aren't doing enough on the adaptation side. We are taking actions to reduce our carbon footprint, but we are not doing enough to adapt to the climate change that is already baked in and to the inevitable flooding and windstorms and downed trees and power lines and all of that. And so I would like to see us elevate the adaptation aspect of this goal.
Thank you, I think it was well stated. Nisa, I think I'll come back to you if you have your, your two specific policies that you wanted to...
I do. One, it's the heat pump, uh, water heater incentive program, and I know there are a couple of other cities that have that program in place. And so how we could accomplish this goal is to work with our sustainability coordinator, SVCE, and look at Palo Alto and other cities that have these programs. My understanding is they did these as pilot programs, and so it's a limited budget amount, um, to councilmember Meadows' point, because we do have a limited budget and these things cost money. And so it's figuring out a pilot program where we, we, you know, have a certain pot of money, and, and, and you have to have a process, right, how people apply, how they qualify, um, in order for them to take advantage of these incentive dollars, um, to, um, either buy the heat pump water heater, or we could also, um, have incentives for electric appliances. Another thing that has come up as we discussed reach codes in the past. Um, so my strong suggestion is for us, as part of this priority, is to focus on education and incentives to help our residents because I've heard loud and clear this has been a hindrance for many of them. Uh, those are two examples that I know other cities are doing. I imagine our sustainability coordinator could look to, I know there are some San Mateo County cities that are also looking at this right now, um, to figure out what we can do as a city to move this priority forward. But I think it's important for us to focus on education, and, you know, the adaptation, actually, it's another area that we haven't focused on, the education piece, is how do we help our residents? Um, and I think I agree with the vice mayor that we need to, now that we may be, you know, taking a pause in some of the actions and codes we're adopting, maybe we look at the other side about, okay, what can we do to incentivize? What can we do to educate? What can we do to really move this forward? And I think that should be our focus for 2024.
So I, I, I think that's a great idea, um, conceptually. I think that the Environmental Commission is going to be excited to hear that because it's something that they were talking about yesterday. Um, the wild card for me is what the cost is going to be. And, and I bring that up not because I don't think we should investigate it, um, but I, I'm a little hesitant to put it as a goal until we really know what to go. How much is it going to cost to move forward with a pilot program? And what's the opportunity that we're going to be giving up to, to dedicate money to that, that cost?
And if I may respond, Mayor, I wouldn't want the goal or the language that we draft for this goal to be that specific. My proposal is for this goal that we talk about, you know, educating and identifying incentives for our residents to move towards accomplishing these things. And so that will allow staff to identify, maybe this could be a future agenda item where the sustainability coordinator comes back and presents different options to us, saying, "This is what we're seeing in neighboring cities. I know in San Mateo County, there's some cities considering it. This is what we're seeing. These are the costs associated with it. Council, tell us where you want us to focus." Um, so that's, I am not proposing any specific, that's the language, education incentives, and I'm open to adaptation as well.
Okay, thank, thank you for clarifying that, then I'm, I'm, I'm on board with that suggestion. Um, do you have any suggested changes or comments on the language that we currently have in the goal? And while you're looking at it, can I go back to, to the vice mayor? Were there specific modifications you wanted to make that, that directed staff to focus on adaptation as opposed to, um, uh, action?
I, I think adaptation should be in the bold print in the, in the first few words of the goal, uh, along with education and incentives. Uh, it, it would be nice to see more carrot and less stick.
So education is already in there. We can do environmental sustainability and adaptation to climate change.
So if I may, Mayor, it would be through education, incentives, and adaptation initiatives. Because that's what it is, identified in the city's climate action. And we don't even have to narrate to the city's climate action, even though that's our policy, just in case there's something else we want to consider. But that's how I would frame it, because when we had adopting and implementing policies last year, we were talking about codes. And we know there's not support for that for many reasons, and so we would take that out.
I just want to add, um, yeah, I could support the direction this is going, and I do think it needs to be a future agenda item to, to listen to the options because I think it's not, um, the education piece, we could act as a broker. Silicon Valley Clean Energy is putting in programs all the time. And I don't know that we need to be funding in, uh, financial incentives when they can be accessed elsewhere, if they can be. And so, um, that's why I, I was uncomfortable with thinking of us dishing out rebates, uh, you know. But, uh, but SVCE does a lot of that, and as you say, we can see what... So it has to be a future agenda item to really understand what the options are. And, and if we acknowledge that, then I'm comfortable with the direction that this, the, the language is, is going here.
Um, I agree with councilmember Meadows because there are a lot of agencies that do offer rebates as well. So, um, regarding, you know, PG&E, Water District. But I just needed to take a minute quickly to ask staff, that screen over there, can we pull up our document? Because as we're making these edits, it's kind of good, like, that we can see the changes we're making and the verb, word changes we're making. Is there a way that we can do that?
I, I can pull up the, the...
I can pull up the goals. I don't know if that, the input to that TV is working, but it'll certainly be on there and on the monitors on the DAS.
Yeah, because it's very helpful if I can see the word changes we're making, because that is helpful for me.
Well, I think what staff is saying is that they can put it up, but it's not going to be in a document that we're wordsmithing.
Oh, you can't? Because before we could.
We could, we can edit in the PowerPoint. We're saying we're not, we're going to check and see if that TV can work, but it would be here and then behind council. So we can pull that up if council wants us to.
Because I think it's also helpful for the public to see what we're changing and how we're editing. We can be verbally saying, this is the changes we want, and we're throwing it here and there. But I think it's important for everybody to be on the same page, to understand what edits and what we're changing to make it happen.
Okay, we could, I don't want to slow us down with hours of wordsmithing. That's something we've gotten away.
Well, we're doing it already, but it helps me as a visual. Otherwise, can you put it on our little screens that's in front of us? And it doesn't have to go on the big ones? If I can have it on our little screens in front of us.
It is.
The wordsmith thing.
Point of clarification, mayor. Is the plan to have staff bring back a resolution like we did last year with all the different priorities spelled out? We will get to see the language. We're not doing that tonight.
And all we've done, I think, is add two clauses to the existing environmental sustainability. We added in an adaptation to climate change in the title.
This is fine. We're changing it up here on our screens.
Yeah, we're trying to figure out why it's not up there right now. And I tried to capture the conversation that the councils had on this one.
Thank you.
Which is what you're seeing up there.
So I think that there are four of us that are okay with moving forward on environmental sustainability with those two modifications, right? All right, let's go ahead and move on to housing. Who wants to get us started on that? Very small one here. Go ahead, vice mayor.
I don't have the answer, but I absolutely think we need to make it a priority to get 300 distill, to break ground. Like, let's get it done.
So I suspect that everyone on the DAS agrees with you. My belief that this 300 distill has not broken ground is because right now, the cost of labor is high, the cost of construction loans is high, getting money from the state has been a difficult process. I don't know that there's anything else that the city of Los Altos can do. And if I'm wrong, then I'm open to putting it in as a goal. But if there's nothing we can do, then I'm hesitant. Yes.
So I know that I have colleagues that have a lot of knowledge to bring to bear on this. But I do think there are several things that we can do. For starters, we can stop being passive. You know, if this squeaky wheel gets the grease, then I want to squeak as loud as possible and get as much grease as we can. And the grease comes from the state and the county and, you know, other jurisdictions, other agencies, nonprofits, and so forth. But we have been somewhat passive. And so for starters, not that it needs to go into this goal per se, but we could have a study session on 300 distill and start the process of surfacing ideas to round out the funding and get it done. When was the last time we brought it up on council? I don't think we talked about it at all the entire year. So, you know, this year, we should make sure that it doesn't fall through the cracks.
I don't disagree with that, but it ignores that the role that the city plays versus the role the county plays versus the role the nonprofit developer plays. And I don't necessarily feel that, again, there's information we could garner, but I'm not convinced that's our role. We can work channels and maybe find out what they are. But I just, the way you phrase it makes me think that you think that we can solve it. And it's not, that part of it, I'm not convinced that's our responsibility. Maybe we can, as you say, grease a little bit. But anyway, I'm just concerned that we could cause more trouble than we're helping with.
So I'd like to ask staff, is anyone on staff in contact with EAH on a somewhat regular basis? And is there anything that EAH would like from the city to help move 330 distill forward?
So we do have regular meetings with the county staff and the Office of Support of Housing, specifically regarding EAH and 330 distill. There hasn't been any discussions, obviously, about, you know, specialized financing mechanisms or things of that nature, because they have already received entitlements from us. So it usually kind of comes a little bit like in tandem or before, which is kind of what happened up until this point with the limited financing that we could provide directly, which was, you know, waivers of the fees and impact fees, which is just under $5 million that the city waived. One of the things that I can do, because what we're talking about regularly with them now is about the actual construction and kind of getting them across the finish line for building, you know, documents and construction documents. I'm happy to reach out to their CEO to discuss if there's anything else that the city specifically can do in collaboration with either EAH directly or the county as well. The only mechanism that I believe the city can really kind of do is we might be able to bring some type of a financing mechanism in regards to a tax and revenue code, which was a property tax exemption. I do not believe that EAH and the county actually did that unless that was in their transaction of land. So I would need to discuss that with potentially Supervisor Smithian's office or the assessor's office to see if the transaction has actually transacted, because I have not been made aware of that. But then again, land leases, we don't really get informed of unless we request as an interested party. So I can do some research and I can bring it back as like an informational item. And then at that time, at a future council meeting, maybe that will be something that you five would like to agendize as another future, maybe, discussion. That's what I think is kind of what I'm hearing and what I can do, at least from my wheelhouse.
Does that mean a study session would be appropriate for that? An appropriate venue for that? Or do you just want to do a presentation at a regular meeting?
I think what I can do is I can provide a structured, essentially, memo or staff report that says what I'm able to kind of ascertain from kind of the different players in the game and kind of let you five kind of take that information, digest it as an item, and then at the end of a council meeting, say, okay, no, let's bring this back as a study session.
So just, I think, based on what I'm hearing, I do think that it is appropriate for the city's policy, if not a priority, to be to be an active partner with other agents, agencies, and actors who are involved with below-market rate housing. If we're going to have a goal that talks about the development of below-market rate housing, I think it should be coined in those terms as opposed to just calling out one specific project. But I'm still kind of on the fence as to whether there's appropriate language for goals. Nisa?
Thank you, mayor. And let me start off by thanking the vice mayor for bringing this up, because as he mentioned, all of last year, I don't think we itemized or agendized 330 distill, which was a priority for us, a huge accomplishment for the city. And to use his word, we were passive. And I know other jurisdictions, you know, even if they have limited authority and there's limited things they can do, they constantly push and advocate to get housing done. And so I really want to thank the vice mayor for bringing this up, because it allowed Mr. Zorn's to share some ideas, which I'm intrigued by, and I hope there's support to pursue it. Because even if it's a small step that the city can do to see if we can move it forward, I think it's worth pursuing. This is a project that the city celebrated. And I don't want us to not do, I don't want us to be passive if there is something for us to do. And so I want to support Mr. Zorn's suggestion of bringing this back as an informational item. And from there, we can decide as a city, do we want to pursue that? And I will offer my assistance if you need, reaching out to either a supervisor's office or the assessor's office. I'm happy to do that. With regards to the priority language, I am fine making it broader, mayor, as you suggested, as long as it's broad enough to include pursuing something related to 330 distill, depending on what Mr. Zorn's brings back. So to your point, I am comfortable not specifying 330 distill in the actual language, but I would support making it broad enough just in case we learn something from Mr. Zorn's that we can actually do something to move this forward and let our affordable housing developer know that this is still a priority for us. Remember us, Los Altos. We know you're doing everything to get financing from the state, but let's see if we can be better partners and help you to move this forward.
Yes, thank you, mayor. I think this has worked out constructively, so thank you for that, both of you. I would add, and we already covered this towards the end of last year, but the Alta Housing thing, you know, needs to fit in there. It's not working optimally from what we can see. And so we already have that.
Yeah.
So it's coming back already. But to me, that's, that's part of the whole affordable housing puzzle, is not just building it, but administering it. And I, so this administration piece, so building, you know. Yeah, so incentivizing whatever, building, administering to enable more affordable housing in Los Altos, so something like that. Let me, let me just finish. And so, again, I want to mention the other thing that belongs here, and I'm not sure that I have a good suggestion. As I talked about before, item five may not be housing, just housing per se, but implementation of the housing element, because it encompasses the housing and the mixed-use commercial component. So I don't want to lose that from our earlier discussion.
Thank you for those comments. I think that's really important, what you brought up with respect to administering housing, not just developing it.
Can we do an update on that, about bringing in house for staff?
It's, well, I know it's a future agenda item.
Okay.
When is that coming back?
So we've had our housing manager on now for six to eight weeks. She's still getting oriented, understands the goals and policies of the council and the housing element. One of her first tasks is working on Alta. I think that's currently scheduled in February, but I may be wrong. That is coming back. I think when we talk about this priority, a lot of that, of course, through the director, will fall to her. So I think how we prioritize that work under this priority will be important. But I'm also trying to be sensitive to, it's difficult to start from, it's a new position in the city, to get oriented. So I also want to be careful how quickly we move large projects into priorities.
Okay, thank you. I definitely like the idea of changing the title from housing to implementing the housing element. I also think it's time that we stop referring to it as the housing element update. At this point, it's our housing element, right? Yeah, so we're implementing the housing element. Councilmember, you've been very patient.
Thank you. I know how important that distill project is, but we have to learn to be able to think outside of the box as well. This is an opportunity, and this is a chance for us to be creative. You talked about perhaps a safe site, but utilizing this building at 330 distill, we can work with other housing and charitable organizations. And they have organizations that allow for, like, if they say, oh, we're not going to use this, we're not able to build for two years out or even five years out, they allow those sites to allow for transitional housing opportunities or shelters. And this has occurred in San Francisco. This has occurred in other cities as well. And I think we need to do that. We can use these opportunities to have a policy that if it doesn't look like it's going to occur within two to three years, this is a chance for us to allow that building to be used to house people temporarily. And then we can work with these models and continue to set an example that we are leaders to provide some sort of transitional housing. So I hope we can consider having that discussion and not be just set on saying, how can we make 330 move faster? Yes, we'd like it to move faster. But then, when I've seen the other programs as well and how successful they are and how they provide homes for the disadvantaged and/or those that need shelter, I'm very pleased with these ideas as well. And we should not close ourselves off to these opportunities.
So the land and the building, of course, are not ours of the counties. But if the two of you wanted to propose as a future agenda item, setting a city policy that would allow for transitional housing, you know, or vehicle dwellers accommodations, I think it's a great idea, and I would support that. Vice mayor?
I'm thrilled that there's interest in at least opening the conversation up about transitional housing or safe parking. I am also very cautious in the sense that, as the mayor pointed out, we don't own that property, the county does. And it's, I wouldn't want to create constraints or impediments to getting the development done on distill. I want to pursue these other topics too, but I think that if we cross those streams, we're jeopardizing the all-affordable development itself by pursuing other programs at that particular site. That would be my concern.
So I think that if we were to move forward with an agendized item, I don't think it would necessarily be for a specific site. I think it would be a general policy for the city. And then when an opportunity at a specific site presents itself, at that time, we can apply the policy either at the council level or perhaps at the staff level.
So mayor, I agree. I think they're two different things. But I just want to confirm with Mr. Zorn's. Do we already have an existing policy? It may not be perfect, but do we already have a policy that addresses this?
I just want to make sure that I understand a policy for safe parking. So we kind of did have to look at this to see if zoning was supported last year. And we ended up backing off from it because there are some nuances. I have done this before in other jurisdictions. There are ways to do it under an emergency declaration of the city council, so there's a way to expedite it. However, obviously, we have to make health and safety findings, which I do feel confident myself and the city attorney discussed this last year. However, the only thing is, though, is we would have to have a very strong partner for something like safe parking lots. It does have a carrying cost of associated operational cost. It's actually, I know it sounds like a great idea, but I have done it, and it is quite an expensive monthly cost. So either the city would have to do that or where the big amount of funding came from was the home funding that came out a few years ago and then the HEAP funding that was available by the state. So that's how I've done it elsewhere, and those pots have now since dried up. So I just, I don't want you to have unrealistic expectations. So we are capable of doing it. We are fully ready to be able to do that if that's the direction of the council. But we would obviously need to agendize that to be able to then truly pursue what I'm outlining right now. I just want you to know that safe parking lots, although they are a great scenario, I myself have actually had to live in my vehicle before when I was 18 years old. So I am a very big proponent of it on a personal level. of it on a personal level. But from an operational, as a professional, technical person having to apply this, I will tell you, there is inevitably some really specific fair housing requirements that we do have to adhere to, and some checks and balances and financial dollars we'd have to commit.
Thank you. The lawyer in me is thinking about all the legal issues that have to be involved in that as well. Councilmember Liang, can you bring it back to the language that we're going to put in after implementing the housing element?
But I do want to clarify. So the reason why it needs to be a discussion of policy, there are models in various counties. And the reason why you want to utilize the county models that we see in San Francisco, as well as organizations like VTA, is because I understand services are important, and they have models for that. So that's the reason why we have to have that.
So I think there's support on the council to bring it up as a future agenda item. We can do that at the appropriate time. But I'd like to bring it back to the actual language of implementing the housing element. Are we okay with the language as it's stated right now, or does anyone want to propose modifications? Vice Mayor, I'll look to you.
I think the language is inadequate because I think in addition to pursuing the implementation of the housing element, we are interested in pro-housing policies that fall outside the housing element, namely safe parking sites and potentially transitional housing. And I say potentially only because the housing element does address transitional housing, but it doesn't address safe parking. And so I don't think we should be constrained to only implementing the housing element. I'd like to see us say, yes, our goal is to implement the housing element and to pursue other policy initiatives that can improve the equitability or the, you know, pursue other policies in conjunction. Don't limit ourselves.
What if the first phrase reads, "The city of Los Altos will implement programs and policies to support the creation of housing that is safe"?
So you're no longer saying that the goal is to implement the housing element. You're saying that it's a broader policy goal. Because you could say... Yes, I get that. I get that. But there was some, there was some energy behind specifically saying we're going to implement the housing element. And so we could do both, right, in language, by saying, we're going to implement the specifically enumerated programs in the housing element and pursue other policies that promote equitable housing in our community.
So we're going to implement the programs on the housing element because we're obligated to do that regardless of whether we make it a city goal. So what I'm proposing is we keep the title housing, and then the language, the beginning language reads more simply than what's there already, "The city of Los Altos will implement programs and policies to support the creation of housing that is safe, diverse, and affordable for all income levels," and on and on. So we would be taking out the housing element update. Are you okay with that?
I'm okay with that language. The proof is in the pudding.
I think the first sentence should read, "The city of Los Altos will implement the housing element, comma, programs, comma, programs, comma, and policies to support the creation." That, I think that'll be more, speaks to more of what we're trying to do.
And Mayor, I can support that.
What I like about it is that it does call attention to the housing element, which is still critically important. And I think too many residents still aren't aware that it's out there and what its implication is, which we've seen that with implementing ordinances. I could get behind that as well.
And I think at this point, again, the mixed-use, the business component is kind of gone in this, which is fine. We can, we put it in up above, I think. But let me make, so policies to support. Earlier, we talked about, support is always, I mean, yes, it's a useful word, but it's kind of bland. So policies to facilitate, incentivize, and administer the creation of housing, because then that ties into what we were talking about earlier. So it ties into Alta potentially being a goal in others. So facilitate, incentivize, and administer the creation of housing, or, yeah, the availability of housing. Incentivize, yeah. It's administer, the availability, maybe, I don't know. I had it. I said it a moment ago, but I forgot it. No, to get rid of support. Policies to facilitate, incentivize, and administer the availability of housing that is safe, diverse, and affordable. I don't know.
A concern that I have is if we use incent, is that obligating us to put in resources?
We did that with 330.
Oh, I'm not saying that it's not appropriate to do it under some circumstances.
You can take it out. I mean, that's fine, you know, to facilitate and administer, yeah.
Facilitate potentially incorporates incentives.
What, Nisa?
No, no, it's fine. I just think even if we put incentivize here, we don't have to feel like, oh, we, like, you know, it's okay. We're going to explore incentives. And if it doesn't work out, it's okay. But I'm fine if we want to say just facilitate and administer.
Okay. Let's then move on to neighborhood safety infrastructure. So I think there certainly is a majority, if not unanimity, on the dais to have something in here about neighborhood safety infrastructure. I know Councilmember Liang was using a different phrase earlier. I don't remember what it was. Public safety infrastructure. So I'm okay with either one of them. As I was doing my final preparation for tonight, I was struck that there is no, well, we know there's no language there. And it struck me as obvious that this is something that we're going to want to discuss. So I came up with some proposed language. And I wish that I had thought of it earlier so that I could have had it emailed with the questions to staff. But with the council's permission, I'd like to read the text that I put together. So if the council's okay with it, I did email it to the city manager. It could be put up on the screen. Hey, man, that's Open Sans. That's my signature font. Nope, changed to the wrong way. Okay, so, "The city of Los Altos will identify and report to the community on the condition of the police station and the two firehouses. Using that report, and based on the public safety needs of the community, the city of Los Altos will develop a plan to replace, repair, and/or rehabilitate the city's public safety infrastructure." This is my thought process. First, I think that we need to get an updated report as to the actual conditions of the police station and the firehouses, and that report needs to be made available to the public. I did ask the city manager if this was something that staff could do, and he assured me that, yes, that this is not an extreme burden. Once we get confirmation of the condition of those structures, at that point, the council would then move forward with developing some type of a plan to finally address our public safety infrastructure. So what are we, are we going to replace? Are we going to rehabilitate? Are we going to repair? Where are we going to get the money from? What are we going to do to finance this thing? But I would absolutely love if by the end of this year, we had really brought to the public's attention what is the condition of these buildings and have a plan in place for what we're going to do about it. So we could tell the public, hey, we know that you are entitled to world-class first responder care, and we're going to do everything we can to make sure that you get it. Councilmember?
Thank you for the effort to write this up. I think it'll be stronger if we eliminate the sentence and a half of the beginning. It should say, "The city of Los Altos will develop a plan to replace, repair, and/or rehabilitate the city's public safety infrastructure that would, which includes the police station and two of our firehouses." I don't think we have to tell them that we're going to identify and we have to write the reports. That's already stated by saying that's part of the plan, and it's cleaner and more succinct, and it'll be...
I like it the way it is, but I'm fine to say, "The city of Los Altos will develop a plan to replace, repair, and/or rehabilitate the city's police station and two firehouses" if that's what the council prefers. Vice Mayor?
Step one is a facilities condition assessment.
Well, we already know the state of repair. That's why we're making it a priority.
But step one is a facilities condition assessment. We have to do an FCA for those facilities. Period. So it should be, I think it's fine to put it in the goal because it doesn't, it isn't something that's free. It is something that we have to allocate budget to do. And despite the assurances from staff, my understanding is that a proper FCA may not necessarily be done totally with in-house assets, and we may need to bring in professionals to complete the FCAs in, you know, at least certain aspects of them. So I actually wholeheartedly support explicitly stating at the front of this goal that we are going to pay for a thorough, professional facilities condition assessment and no longer rely on, you know, gossip and scuttlebutt about flooding in the basement of the police department. Let's get it on the record professionally.
Anyone else?
So, yes, to both. But, I mean, I think, so I'm going to get into the wordsmithing. So we will conduct a facilities, whatever you called it, FCA. We will conduct a facilities condition assessment on the condition of the police station and the two firehouses. And based on the public safety needs of the community, we will develop a plan to replace, repair, and/or rehabilitate the city's public safety infrastructure. Ding, 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 yeah. Yes.
I had wrote it, but just to define the assessment, I said, "The city will conduct a public safety infrastructure needs assessment." I didn't specify two firehouses, I just said. But everything else, I had the same. But I had, "The city will conduct a public safety infrastructure needs assessment," and da-da-da-da-da, based on, yeah.
Okay, are we good?
You can make the whole last sentence shorter by just saying, "and develop a plan to address any deficiencies."
I could support that because frankly, what's the difference between repair and rehabilitate?
We can talk about Halsey House.
We'll get to that next. Hang on. So I'm okay with Pete's suggestion, and I think Sally supports it as well. So, okay, and so does Nisa. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, what was the change at the very end of the last sentence? It was...
And develop a plan to address any deficiencies.
Identify the assessment.
Staff, are we good? I know that there's some fast speaking going up here. All right. Okay. Are there other goals that anyone wants to, wants to propose?
I was joking, but just to clarify on the wordsmithing, Mr. Maginot, I think we need to call out public safety and not just safe facilities. I think if I saw the draft, it didn't say public safety.
And I would support that because we took out of community safety or whatever it is now, we took out the high-quality public safety services, so...
First sentence, Mr. Maginot. "The city of Los Altos will conduct a public safety infrastructure needs assessment."
That's a very different thing. A needs assessment is not the same as a facilities condition assessment. A needs assessment looks at the needs of the public and says, oh, well, you should have, you know, this much fire service, and you need to have a fire truck with a ladder that reaches the tallest building in the city, and blah, blah, blah. The facilities conditions assessment is actually a very different and discreet, specific task.
Then it's fine. I'm totally supportive saying facilities condition instead of needs.
Yeah, I think Pete's right. Earlier, we took out the, from community safety, we took out the sentence, "The city of Los Altos will continue to provide the high-quality public safety services that the community values." Is there any interest in adding that sentence into this goal? Going twice. All right, doesn't look like it. So, Councilmember?
I want to address some of the language we took out. When you say, "A plan to address any deficiencies," I don't think that sends a clear picture that we might be open to. So the language you had earlier that would possibly include repair, replace, you know, really speaks to what we're open to really consider. When you talk about address deficiencies, it's like just fixing it. So I think we need to put back...
So what I'm hearing you say is that it's too vague to leave it at just deficiencies. And I think, I think we considered that, but there was a majority that wanted to go with deficiencies.
I'm fine either way, too.
Okay. All right, let's put all the words back in. Okay.
I need to go find the words that we deleted.
Ctrl-Z.
But then I lose all the changes that were made after that.
It's 10:15. I would like to keep us moving as opposed to wordsmithing. We will see it again when the resolution comes back on consent at the next meeting? Fingers crossed.
Mayor, we would intend to bring this back at the next meeting, yes.
Okay. Are there any other goals that anyone wants to, that wants to propose that we add on to the goals for 2024?
This isn't a goal, but I do want to report, because we were very close and maybe we achieved it, and it does influence a lot of spending when we look at capital improvement is the PCI index. And if we've achieved that goal and ticked it off, what will we do with pavement in the future? Is there a better way? You and I've had a conversation about whether that was really the right goal, but we've achieved it. So let's just say it was. And, you know, so the whole thing about if we've, have we achieved PCI, what that means, what the maintenance is, what's better. At some point, it doesn't have to be urgent, but I would like to know that, and maybe my colleagues would as well. Because if we've achieved something, and that frees up $2.5 million a year, is it? No, what is it annually? Anyway.
Right now, council set a goal of PCI of 76. It's going to come back, I believe, at the next meeting or the following. The current PCI is 74. If we maintain expenditures of 2.5 million a year, we can maintain that number at 76 when we get there. However, at that time, we may want to revisit how we've approached it.
All righty. Good.
For the public, that's pavement condition index. Potholes.
Councilmember?
Yeah, that's why, that was important to maintain asset management because it fell under that. The other thing, when you're talking about what else we would like to see... The other thing, when you're talking about what else we would like to see?
Well, not, not what else you would like to see, but do you want to propose other goals? For our strategic goals for 2024?
Yes, I do. And, and that's what I'd like to see to have as a strategic goal. Is to how we're going to expand our open space and parkland acquisition opportunities. I think it's important that that is a strategic goal. Because as we continue to keep growing, our per capita parkland space for our population is going to be going lower. And we have one of the lowest in the county. The other thing is...
Just for clarification, why is our parkland space going to decline?
No, per, yeah, per capita, based on per capita.
Well, every, everyone's per capita is going up.
Yeah, but they, they, they meet it and they exceed their per capita parkland for some cities. But we're below, so then...
I support this.
Thank you.
And, and if I can, can help your conversation a little bit?
Okay, go ahead. But I do have another one.
Yeah, okay, I'll be very quick so I don't derail you. Yeah, I, I, on a per capita basis, other jurisdictions can expand their parkland because they aren't 100% built out like Los Altos is. And if we meet the goals of our housing element, we are going to add probably $80 to $90 million to our Park and Lou fund for the acquisition of parkland. But we have to be a hell of a lot more creative about where we find it because we're 100% built out. So I fully support a discussion and an effort to try and find creative ways to expand our open spacing and, and green space.
So, conceptually, I agree with what's been said. As a practical matter, land is so expensive in Los Altos. And the Park and Lou money that we have really is kind of earmarked for some other big projects that are on the horizon. I, I am nervous about making a priority of this council to direct staff to go and start getting additional land to be treated as parkland. So it, it, again, I, I'm looking at the details of how, and I see everyone's hands going up. Everyone's gonna lick, gonna go after me, that's fine. This is something that the council has talked about before in prior iterations. I know that, that earlier today, I was, I was talking with, with the city manager and others. Years ago, the Parks and Recreation Commission actually put together a scoring system for the city to use when, when a parcel could be identified to be acquired for additional parkland. And there were, there were, there were points that would be added based upon the location of the land and, and, and other categories. But the, and, and I believe that the council adopted that as a policy. But again, the problem remains that when, when a house goes on the market and it's $4 million and there, there's 20 other bidders who are, are all cash. Meanwhile, the council has to act and we have to arrange to get money. Just, just as a practical matter, I, I think that we are, could be asking staff to spend a lot of time on something that, that is not focused enough to yield what we really want. And, and, you know, if buying parcels haphazard as they come on the market is, is, is not gonna build a nice, brand-new park somewhere where we want to put it. You got, you have to buy parcels that are next to each other to have size or maybe parcels that are adjacent to an existing park. And I, 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 I'm sorry that I'm coming across as a naysayer because my origins in, in being involved with the city comes from Parks and Rec. And the parks are so important to me. And my, my kids volunteer with the Parks and Rec Department. It really does matter to me. But from a goal standpoint, I, I don't see how we can, I think we are setting staff up and, and therefore ourselves up for, for failure. Okay.
Pick your favorite child. And then I'll do the last. Pick your favorite child. Aw. Thank you. No, so let me address the proposal made by Councilmember Liang. So I 100% support the city continuing to figure out if we can increase our park space, 100%. This is something that we've said for years. You know, you go back, we always said, "We don't want to touch the Park and Lou just in case something becomes available." Having said that, I don't support making it a priority because I really don't know what else we can do this year that we're not already doing. We are, if there's an opportunity, I think staff, the city manager, understands that we do want to increase our park space. If we make it a priority, it may give the impression that we want staff to go out and be proactive in trying to identify the park, park space. And to the mayor's point, it's not sitting out there. It's not something that they can actually just, we have to continue looking for opportunities. But to say it's a priority, they may end up expending time and resources doing something because it's a priority of the council that they're not able to accomplish. So for example, when 330 Distill came on the market and we learned about it, one of the things we considered was a park. And I think those are things that will come up that, sitting here today, we can't even think of or imagine. But council and staff, I think, are fully aware of the fact that if there's an opportunity out there for us to really secure parkland, that's something we want to do as a council. And as we look at different developments coming in and, you know, they can either give us park space or give us Park and Lou fees, that's something we'll continue to do. But I don't support making it a priority because I think we're setting ourselves up to not really accomplishing it. Because this is something, as you know, Councilmember Liang, we've had on our priority list for years because I think we do want this and we do support it. And we'll keep looking for these opportunities. But I think it's, I would say, wasted space to have it as a priority for this year. So I don't support adding it to the priority list. But I do think, I think staff fully understands and I think council is aware that if there's an opportunity that presents itself, thankfully, we have Park and Lou fees. I don't think we have spent it all and more will come in, as the vice mayor said, that we would take advantage of those opportunities. And we are aware of at least one other potential site and there may be others. And we'll just keep, you know, our eyes on all these opportunities and our ears open for others that may come up. But I don't support making it one of our identified priorities for this year.
So first, Mayor, respectfully, I'm going to disagree with you despite the fact that you were my mentor on the Parks Commission. And I suspect Nisa may have been yours and Lynette may have been Nisa's. So we do have some Parks and Rec experience on the dais. I don't know where the planning commission silliness comes from. No, but let's be serious. There are two things that we can do strategically, like, as a strategic goal, proactively now to add to our parks portfolio. And the reason that other jurisdictions have a much higher ratio per capita or per residential acre is, for example, yes, in Mountain View, they have joint use agreement with the schools for the fields. Now, we've been talking about that for a long time, too. And we cannot unilaterally create a joint use agreement. But we can work with the schools to get access to those fields. It would save the schools money. So the public hearing this can put pressure on the schools, by the way. It would save the schools money by diverting maintenance staff from the schools, you know, and funding for that to other schools' priorities. And with our Parks and Rec staff and our Civic Rec platform, we are better suited to manage the leasing of those fields. And in my other life, I was one of the lessors of the fields. So I, and I can tell you that the major sports leagues in our community would all rather deal with the City of Los Altos than with the school district. Not because there's anything wrong with the school district, but because there are so many other priorities for the school district that when, you know, the, the director of fields for Pony Baseball or Little League Baseball or Girl Softball or, or Soccer calls the district office at Covington to either access a field or check on field status or any of that, you know, they, they often don't get through. We're more suited to provide a better experience for our community. And, you know, we should be looking at things like the high school pools during the summers so that we could potentially provide that amenity to our community. I know there's a lot of other demands on those facilities already, but it's a conversation that we can proactively pursue and make a priority. Now, the other thing I will say is South Los Altos is in a little bit better shape in terms of park space than North Los Altos. And we have discussed tangentially, even tonight, the idea of using one of our parking plazas for a parking structure, which would alleviate the parking pressure that is a restraint on some of the other projects that we've contemplated, like housing on some of the plazas or a theater on one of the plazas. And if we do a parking structure with a park on top, as long as we do it the right way, which involves a degree of digging and some other things that are probably going to elevate the cost. But we can use Park and Lou money for that. And it's not fungible like any other, like, it's not the same as general fund money. So there are some things that we can do strategically to increase our parks portfolio and make our, make the experience for our residents better in those spaces without necessarily identifying a particular parcel to buy. Because frankly, I don't think buying land in our built-out community is a very good solution. We should look at the parking plazas that we have, we should look at the schools, and that's the way to approach this problem, in my opinion, having served on the Parks and Rec Commission for several years.
Councilmember?
Oh, no.
It... Well, it might, from, from what I, I mean, it's very tentative, but it sounds kind of, kind of two to two at this point. That's why I was looking at you, but you have not spoken yet on, on this issue.
I, I actually... So what's the question?
So, so...
Yeah, I, okay, yeah.
The, the big question is, do, the overall question is, do we want to add?
A goal.
A goal for, for...
I, I, I think that the purchase of land for park space is not the truest thing. I don't, I agree with Councilmember Flagler. I do think, and I hope it already is being looked at in the parking study and elsewhere. I mean, I've seen beautiful soccer fields on top of, perhaps submerged down at Scripps College and Claremont Colleges. It's a, it's a wonderful way to do, to use the land, so. But I, I would assume that some of the, the work that we're doing to look at what's going on downtown would encompass that. And so I don't think it necessarily is a goal. It's part of how we're looking at the whole downtown configuration. So I don't think it would be, I don't think it fits as a goal. If there is a parcel and all of a sudden someone wants to give us four quarter acre lots for a $5 million plus, blah, 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 just say yes. Call an emergency council meeting. Will we invite that?
And you didn't hear any of the erudite discussion. Oh, I'm so sorry, that was priceless. Yeah. Yeah. So I don't support a goal. Opportunistically, come get us when you see something. And otherwise, let's explore it through the parking plazas and the work that we're doing in the downtown. Thank you.
Councilmember.
Well, the reason why you have these as goals or priorities is because it, it, it lets staff know that it is a priority. You know, you have those two lots adjacent to Hillview, right? Should they come up? One did come up, right? You know, in front, next to... We missed it because it's not a priority.
So I, I want to interject really quick. So I'm going to be the bearer of bad news. If the parcel is zoned residential, we cannot acquire it for parkland unless you're going to upzone another site. So that's going to be a fundamental thing. There's the no, no net loss provisions that the state approved. So anytime that we reduce or eliminate the residential density capacity, we now are going to have to find the alternative. So when I've kind of mentioned certain nuances about, we should hope and pray the sites that are identified today come in with as many housing units as possible, is because of situations like this about that we are at a, at a loss essentially of that there's not really anywhere else for parkland. That's why myself, the city manager, and Mr. Karnasekha have talked for quite some time about, well, let's explore the alternatives of using something that we don't have to acquire, we already have. However, there's the swap of fund for the structure to build than the two-in-one situation, which is what you guys have discussed about a parking structure. So, you know, that's definitely on our radar. I mean, and that's just creative thinking because that's an acre site, which I will at least share is from the BAE study that we just concluded for inclusionary housing. The pro forma analysis did render 12.5 to 14.5 million dollars per acre. So, and that's unimproved land. So if we're talking about improved land, we're now talking about even escalated rates above that. So I, you know, when we're talking about acquisition, it's going to get really, really tight in the coming years for anything like that, so...
Could you repeat that number? What was it?
12.5 to 14.5 million dollars per acre.
Yep. And Mayor, if I may, I just want to follow up because I heard that number as well. What's our current Park and Lou fund? How much do we have left in the fund?
Uh, it's just under $9 million. And then Councilmember Daly's projection is pretty accurate on the lower end. It would be $80 million at full buildout of the almost 2,000 units. But again, ebb and flow because if it's single-family versus multifamily. So it could be all the way just under $100 million.
But we'll have to give some of that to developers. We'll have to, so I took a conservative estimate.
The goal?
I support a concept and I think staff is well-aware of this being something that we would love to achieve and accomplish. But I don't think we need to make it an identified goal for this year.
So I, I am completely in alignment with what Councilmember Flagler just said and the explanation that we just had from Director Zornz, which indicated that staff is thinking about this and is trying to think outside the box and that there are constraints that we didn't even consider up here are, are in my mind, really dispositive of the issue. So because there are three councilmembers that don't want this as a goal and given the late hour, I would like us to move on to the next proposed goal.
That's fine, but I would just appreciate an opportunity to finish my comments and my, my points because sometimes if you hear out another person fully, it might change their position. And so I really didn't appreciate how this is handled and how I'm constantly, when my hand is up, it always goes to someone else. So I would appreciate a little bit more respect in that manner. So I'd like to complete my comments. Yes, you may not agree with the idea of open space and parkland acquisition, but the verbiage might be wrong.
So I'm, I'm going to interrupt you on that because what you just said is an absolute mischaracterization of my position and I believe Councilmember Flagler's position and Councilmember Meadows' position. I don't think any of us are opposed to acquiring more. I think we are opposed to, to putting a, to, to, to adopting a goal that is not realistic to, to accomplish, given the constraints under which the city operates.
But then...
That is a significant difference from what you said, which is that we didn't support acquiring more open space or parkland.
I'm not saying that. I said, I may have worded it wrong. But we can change the opportunity to have it be about open space and parkland opportunities. Because just as what Vice Mayor said, this would guide our staff and provide opportunities for us to have the conversations, to have more use with school district parkland like we've had in the past, if we could have that as a priority. Our goal is to have these opportunities. And if we could do that and make it a priority, this will help to, to set the message to staff that, yes, this is the direction we'd like to go and we can make it happen. But that's the reason why I think that if I'm given an opportunity to continue my statements or to, to present my thought without everybody cutting me off or saying, "No, we're, we're, we're going to move on and that's it." I just would like an opportunity to, to share what I originally had. I think if you understand the intent more, this would have helped shaped it and maybe perhaps change your thoughts on this. But I think if you don't want to have any park or open land, open space opportunities where we could have some guidance for staff to consider working with the school districts, that's fine, which is fine. So... So I guess you're past that.
May, may I offer a suggestion?
Please.
If I may, which is, I see this, the school discussion I see as a future agenda item. I, I would support it as a future agenda item. I don't support it as a goal because I don't think we have enough information. So if you wanted to bring that forward, again, it would go to the two-by-twos, I guess, or whatever. We could discuss that. But I, I'm not averse to that discussion. I'm just averse to making it a goal. And then if, if we, we have the discussion and we change our mind, then, then we can do that. And the budget discussion would reflect that potentially, or at least meetings could be set up. So that is a compromised position. I'm offering it, but.
And, and, and by saying opportunities, it would provide for, like when we have that parking structure discussion, these, that's another opportunity. So if we continue to make it a priority, that's why you want to keep it in mind, and it helps to guide our direction. The next one is, everything that we've discussed here, it says, it says that the city council will accomplish these goals by engaging the community. We do say that. But that's why I think it's important to also have our strategic priority to include transparency, community engagement, and participation. Because a lot of what we have, steps that we have taken, has made it more difficult for us to get public input and to increase engagement. So I, I think that's important because if we make it a strategic priority, we have models of our neighboring cities on how they have always continuously reached out, provided clear, non-guiding outreach opportunities to really hone in as to what the public really wants us to focus on as well or to help shape our priorities that we have established. So I think it's important that we have that as well as one of our strategic priorities.
Are you finished with your comments?
Well, that's my other, yeah, but then.
Any thoughts from councilmembers?
I'm not sure that I understood the suggestion. Again, we tried to pick up on the engaging the community, et cetera, in the lead paragraph as, again, our values were there. So I'm not sure if the suggestion is to then take this, I mean, this draft will come back to us and the community can comment on the draft. So I'm, I'm, I'm not understanding what is being suggested, I guess.
I, I wanted that to be like one of the numbers that we have, to make sure that transparency is a strategic priority, community engagement continues to be, and their participation. Because we value it, but, you know, we really don't do anything to, to truly respect, respectfully try to get, gather that. I mean, we can say, yes, we have pop-ups and stuff, or we have consultants do it. But I think that's a business or consultant doing that because we're paying them. But we have to make sure that they understand what steps we're doing. Just as like for tonight, I'm going to say tonight's agenda item, number three. How it's worded did not lead me to believe that we will have this full-fledged discussion that becomes an in-depth strategic priority, our priorities honed in into or put in to everything under our strategic priorities and that we are eliminating the retreat. So I think that if I was better aware on how things are worded in our agendas as well, when the, we had in the past, someone was upset because a lighted traffic signal was going in front of their house. They were saying, hey, how we word our agendas isn't truly what we are trying to get public input on. You know, that person came back, was upset. If we really truly want public engagement and input, then we have to be more transparent. And that's why it has to be a strategic priority, and then we can add language as to how we'll do that.
Any other thoughts from councilmembers?
I'll brief the comment, Mayor. So I looked at the language and it was clear to me that we were going to be discussing our strategic goals tonight. I, 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 I don't think that was misleading or insufficient in the description. I think what we have in the opening statement is sufficient to address Councilmember Liang's concerns. Because what we're saying is with all these different priorities, we're going to engage with the community, we're going to be transparent with the community, and we're going to encourage their input. I don't understand how setting a separate goal of transparency and community engagement based on what Councilmember Liang said would be accomplished. I know in the past we have had community engagement as a priority, but there were specific things tied to that goal that the council at the time worked on and wanted to accomplish with staff. What I'm hearing from Council, Councilmember Liang is different. She's asking for us to make sure when we agendize items, when we're considering an item, we make sure the public is aware of it. We make sure we encourage and solicit input. Those are things that are already covered in the opening statement, and we already are planning to do for each of these priorities. So I don't support having a transparency or a community engagement item as a separate goal. I don't think it's necessary. I think we're all aligned that that is something we plan to embed in all our priorities and continue to do so.
Thank you, and I would agree with that position. Councilmember Liang, is there anything else you'd like to say on this?
Um, no, that's okay.
Uh, are there any other goals that councilmembers would like to propose?
So based, if I may, Mayor. Based on our earlier discussion, I don't know if it's a goal or maybe it's just an agenda item. We talked about the mission. Do we want to, to update the mission or the vision or?
I think we need to agendize this and the city attorney is nodding.
Okay.
And I will certainly be a second, and we'll see if we get a third.
I'd be a third in support of that for sure.
Councilmember?
So when we're talking about priorities, I think it's important for us, as we're talking about, this is our retreat. I think it's important that we have our conversations that we need to have. I think that what we, we would, probably would have had at our retreat is this opportunity for continuing education and conference opportunities that we need to talk about. We have the national conference that's coming up.
So that, that, that's still, that's still on, on the list to be talked about tonight. We're not, we're not, we're not done yet. So we're, we're, we're still, we're still on goals.
Okay, because I, I'm never clear on how you're doing things. And sometimes I, I feel like the four of us don't agree, so that's okay, we're moving on. Or we're not going to include this because, so I'm just, I'm just getting some clarification. Because also, in prior opportunities, I've always asked about, can we have some sort of team building, compassion training opportunities? If I knew we were needing to talk about everything, I would have added a lot more to the list. See, so when you say strategic goals, I mean, I wasn't clear because, and I, I opened the conversation when we had this conversation, when we started talking about this agenda item, that this is how I interpret it. When we're talking, how it's worded, council's strategic goals. So it was high level and I think that was made clear. But now, as we continue to converse, then I'm getting a different message. So that's why, I know most of you guys are communicating and brown acted with each other, which is fine, and I'm okay with that. But obviously, there is some sort of, it is obvious that we need to do some team building. And if it's not obvious to you, that's fine. I'll try to find it at a conference. But just know that, that's why I've been attending conferences as well. So I hope we can have that conversation and we can continue that tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember. Okay, so I don't believe that there are any other proposed goals for the council for 2024. Staff, do you have the direction that you need to be able to draft a resolution for our consideration?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. Uh, are there any issues that staff thinks that we should be, that we haven't discussed already that we should as part of the goal setting?
Uh, not at this time, Mayor.
Okay.
I have, I have a question. So the mission statement discussion's coming back. It's going to be, was that the future agenda?
There are three councilmembers who would like it brought back as an agenda item.
Should the agenda be broad enough that then if you want to form a subcommittee, you could do that, or do you just want to have a general discussion? Oh, it will be a quick item. Oh, okay.
I, I don't think we need a subcommittee.
Okay, well, then we won't be able to form one unless we put it on the agenda, so, just checking. What, you know, consider whether subcommittee or whatever, so that we could.
Yeah, I, I guess it doesn't hurt to make a broad enough that we could do it if we want to. Okay, so on the suggestions from council that we received, there were two items that were procedure changes rather than, than policy. The first one was continuing education and conference opportunities for councilmembers. Councilmember Liang, was that your suggestion?
Yes, that's my suggestion.
Do, do you want to expand on that a little bit, please?
So I think it's, it's, it was decided that, we had that conversation about how do we decide who's going to conferences and stuff. And so I think it's important that we are able to understand that if we have a budget similar to that of staff, and I talked about it, that we could be able to pick and choose which conferences we want to decide which would best benefit us. And that's why I wasn't sure if it's a strategic because there was a lot more, like I said, I would add to the list. So I hope I'm not limited to just what's here.
You're, you're not limited to just what's here. So I, I think what you are proposing is a future agenda item to revisit and reconsider our conference attendance policy, which we adopted toward the end of last year. Is that correct?
Yes, and I think it's important that it can, for us to have continuing education is important. So I think it's, it's something that we need to address either at the next meeting because, like I said, there's conferences coming up. And if we want to, to best get early booking opportunities, it's good for us to have that opportunity.
Thank you. I, I think that you have stated very well the importance of continuing education. Uh, I think that the current policy promotes that. I'm comfortable with it. But if there are two other councilmembers that want this as a future agenda item, then we'll bring it back. So there are two others? Okay, Councilmember Flagler?
No, I, I don't support bringing it back, but I just want to make sure that Councilmember Liang understands the current policy, and maybe she can work with the city manager and/or the city attorney. Because the current policy allows you and other councilmembers to do exactly what you're asking to do. You would just need to follow the process outlined in the policy. And so I'm confused why, that's why I don't support revisiting it because you haven't said anything that I don't think is already covered and allowed under the current policy.
Yeah, if it's a Cal Cities Conference, you, you don't need prior approval from the council. If it's not a Cal Cities Conference, I think under certain circumstances, you can ask for council's agreement for the city to pay for the attendance. You just have to bring it to the council.
So the national conference is coming up, and I hope we could agendize that for discussion.
Okay, is, is there? Going twice, is there a second?
Well, yes, if someone, you know, it would, yes. At the end of the meeting, you would bring that, or maybe it does need to be agendized so we can discuss the value of it, but, city attorney?
You have to agendize it, so we can.
Okay, so can we have agenda item of any councilmember requesting attendance at the, the National League of Cities meeting? Is that it? Okay, and, and when is it? Which one? Just something to identify the meeting.
I know it's coming up. I don't know the specific dates. I know that, you know.
Okay, can you just get identifying information, the staff, so that they can, they can clearly identify what meeting is we're talking about?
As I recall the policy, it would just come forward. It doesn't, doesn't need support from other councilmembers. It's a request of a councilmember. So just ask Councilmember Liang to work with Mr. Karnasekha on the dates in the request, and once we have that, we'll put it on the next agenda.
Thank you. Okay, the next one on our list is electronic voting, and this, this is something that I want to propose to the council. I, we all know that there are other cities that do electronic voting. Essentially, everyone has, has two buttons in front of them, and when a question is called, yes or no. And if you don't, if you want to abstain or, or, or otherwise can't vote, then you wouldn't press either of them, obviously. I, I really like the idea of the council moving to electronic voting. I think it's, it's a little bit quicker, but more importantly, I, I think that it is useful for all of us to cast our vote when the question is called, as opposed to taking cues from other councilmembers. I mean, when, when, we've all been elected to educate ourselves, to deliberate, to consider. But ultimately, we've been elected to make a decision on each issue that comes before the council. So I really like the idea of when a question is called, each of us presses a button. And the, the, the public can easily see who was voted, uh, taken what position. It's very quick. I also think that it's better for the public because sometimes it isn't clear when we do a roll call vote, who voted yes, who voted no. Often, the summary after a vote will be the motion passes, four to one, three to two. But maybe the announcement won't, won't be who were in the majority, who was in the minority. We are still having technical issues at times. So I think it's more informative for the public also if we were to vote electronically. So, Councilmember Liang?
I need a clarification. I think it should be a discussion item because when you say electronic voting, I think it's important to understand what updates on the DAS we, we need to make because we just improved our DAS. Also, it's, I need to know the financial impact on that because, as you know, Palo Alto does kind of have like this electronic voting thing, but the public doesn't get to see it. In addition, after you vote, you still have to verbally take the vote. So I got to understand that better, and I think it should be a, a council, further council discussion.
Your points are, are very well taken. As with the previous item, really the question is, are there two other councilmembers that want to proceed with this? So I see Councilmember Flagler? Anyone else?
I'll support it. I mean, yeah, there's, there's all sorts of different flavors. When Cupertino votes, they vote it once and you do see it. So, you know, I guess, yeah, so I'd be interested in getting more information, making an agenda item, yes.
Okay, are there any other procedural changes that anyone wants to recommend?
So how are you going to proceed? Is it when you say procedural changes, are you just saying procedure-wise? Or are you saying other items that people want to bring up?
Let's include other items that people want to bring up for retreat.
So I think I mentioned earlier that one of my things was some sort of team building. I think it's important that we have something like that also or opportunities for us to have sessions for like compassion training where we can include the public. So those are two other items I think is important.
So councilmember, we worked, I thought, very well together tonight. We had a discussion, lot of input, went around many times until close to the end, and you didn't feel heard close to the end. But, I mean, we worked, in my opinion, effectively, cohesively on this item tonight that we've spent a number of hours. So I'm not sure, you know, it's not like a corporation where we have HR goals. And, you know, I actually think, and throughout last year, that we generally work very well together. So I don't understand quite what we'd accomplish through team building, but that's just my opinion.
And I'll just, thank you, Mayor, and I'll just follow up. And I am sure you have the norms language ready to go, Mayor, but I know, I recall that it doesn't require team building as part of the retreat. It's optional, so I just want to make it clear for the public that this is not something that we're omitting. It's, you know, we can do the, the primary purpose of the retreat is to identify and adopt our strategic goals, which is what we're doing. And so the idea of team building or some other social exercise is optional. It's not required. And so it's not that, you know, the councilor, staff, or the mayor chose not to do something we're required to do. To the point of compassion training or empathy training, I agree with councilmember Meadows. I think we work well together. I do want to make sure that we don't confuse, you know, or disagreement or policy disagreements with not working well together. You know, we've been on council for years together. We've all observed other councils where they disagree. You have four-one votes, three-two votes, four-three votes. That doesn't mean you don't work well together, you're not respectful of each other. It just means you have policy disagreements, and that's okay. And so when the public watches us and they see a four-one vote or a three-two vote, I wouldn't want them to walk away thinking, oh, that council doesn't get along, or they don't work well together. That's how it works. We won't agree on policy issues because we have different experiences, different political views, different policy positions, and so that's what we bring to bear on the DAS. And so I just want to make that point, that our policy disagreements does not mean we're not collegial or we don't work well together. As councilmember Meadows says, if you watch our council meetings, we listen to each other, we're respectful, and in the end, we just may not agree.
Thank you, councilmembers, and I would agree with everything that Sally and Nisa just said. I would even go farther than Unisa, and I would say that policy disagreements and votes that are not unanimous are the sign of a healthy democracy. We have a very diverse citizenry, and the residents who elected us do not all agree. So I think in order to ensure that the residents' views are represented by their elected representatives, again, it's healthy when policymakers are disagreeing because it shows that the various beliefs of the residents are in fact being represented through the democratic process.
So I did want to add on that. I only suggested that because I feel that we could work better. Yes, you may think that we can work collegially. I do my best to work respectfully with everyone as well. But maybe then we need unbiased training because maybe you may not realize that how your actions are sometimes may be interpreted differently from me, by me. I mean, when I had my hand up, you went and, you know, called your respective friends, and then you turned to councilmember Meadows. I mean, normally you'd call the people who normally have, are prepared to speak and ready to speak. And then you kind of all made a decision because, yes, you guys all, it's not about policy decision. It's your actions sometime that maybe you're unconscious of. And I think by having some sort of team building, that would just make us more conscious of how we're acting. And then it would help build bridges. I mean, Mayor, you are uncomfortable talking to me, and it's obvious to me. So I think that if we had some sort of team building exercise or program, I'm saying that we can work better together. If we have an opportunity to work better together, I mean, we should be doing that. And I get it. If you don't want to do it, that's fine. And, but my goal was to just suggest it and to provide it.
Thank you for the suggestion. Does anyone else want to make any other suggestions or proposals for our retreat? Councilmember.
I saw you, Vice Mayor. So I didn't submit this earlier, but just based on the discussion and other thoughts I've had at the end of last year when we were discussing Jarden and what was happening there, I just want to touch on the role of the two-by-twos. I do think they have a very important role to play on our council and in our city. You know, already just from tonight's discussion, safe routes to school, environmental goals, the parks, the joint use agreement. Like, there are all these things that I think the two-by-two subcommittees can bring up. Jarden is another example where I think that's something, I am on the MVLA two-by-two with the Vice Mayor, and I'm hoping that we can bring that up with our colleagues there to really vet issues that touch both the school jurisdiction and the city jurisdiction. So I just wanted to underscore the importance of these two-by-twos and just point out there are several issues that we deal with on council that I think will be, we will be well-served and our community will be well-served if we raise them at the two-by-two level. And another one that just came to mind is mental health, youth mental health. So I just, you know, we're all on different two-by-two committees, and I hope we'll use those platforms to advance these issues that affect both the city community and the school community.
I support that. I think that we were on the Los Altos School District two-by-two, councilmember Daly and I, but we've never met with them. So I think it's important to have, setting that date, and so we can have the discussion so we can provide that guidance to those teams meeting with the two-by-two members.
I wasn't part of that two-by-two. I was the liaison for LASD, so I attended their board meetings, but I wasn't on the two-by-two committee.
Yeah, we were identified as two-by-two committee members.
Fine, going forward.
And that, yeah, that's why we have to agendize and to have these, you know, items that we want to have agendized for the two-by-twos as well. The other thing is.
I'd like to take a break, but I don't mind waiting until councilmember is finished.
Okay, the other thing is, we want to talk about, I think it's important for our transportation opportunities as well, like shuttles and microshuttles. We have our senior commissions that's always had that as a priority. We talked about how we provide services for seniors, but we need to have that conversation and have that opportunity to, to, like, I know that Santa Clara, as well as Cupertino, have the Hopper Shuttle. And they are expanding their program to include Sunnyvale. We should have that discussion on these transportation, microshuttle opportunities.
So Mr. City Manager, that is on a future agenda item, isn't it?
That's correct, Mayor. I believe that's the first February meeting, I believe, maybe second.
Okay, so it's coming up in February.
Okay, thank you. And then the other thing is, I'm going to bring it up again about, we need funding, and we should consider having a lobbyist because they can advocate for earmarks and get monies for us to have, to implement things with our city. And so I would encourage us to be open to consider that as we need more infrastructure needs. We, there's a lot of grants, and that's how other cities are able to seek more funding for programs. And I think it would be very helpful if we will be willing to revisit that.
So councilmember, just to clarify, is this a comment that you want the council to be open to the idea? Or are you asking to agendize hiring lobbyists at a future, at a future council meeting?
Both. So I guess we should have a discussion to agendize it so we can, hopefully you'll be open to it.
Are there two other council members who want to have a discussion about hiring a lobbyist?
But I was wondering why you always say two other, because it only takes one other council member so that we can have the discussion. If we want staff to do the work, then you need two more. So actually, when it comes to items for Lynette, I just want to let you know sometimes it only takes one other person to support me to have a discussion.
Okay, so you believe that you could give a presentation without any staff support on this matter?
Actually, I could ask a lobbyist to help provide a discussion as to the, or, okay, let's get the staff support. Okay, two others.
So are there two other council members who want to have the discussion?
I was initially opposed to this, but we have seen in the last 12 months where it has paid off for some of our neighboring communities. So I would reluctantly support this discussion and that presentation from staff about what lobbyists cost and how we find them and what we could expect.
It's just a discussion, and you can learn from it, just to let you know. And thank you, councilmember Daly.
Okay, so thank you. I'm not seeing a third council member at this time. Are there any other suggestions that anyone wants to propose during our retreat?
Well, also, during that opportunity to have that discussion, we might also learn how staff feels because that's why we should be open to having the discussion. And councilmember Meadows didn't even weigh in on that. I didn't see her nod no or say no.
On the lobbyist question?
Yes.
Well, as we were talking, the only thing that was running through my mind was, do they save us more money than they cost? Somehow, I don't imagine that that's the business model for a lobbyist, so therefore, I didn't weigh in because I don't see, maybe seven years from now with the next housing element? That's the only example I know of. But, you know, so right now, I just, I'm not supportive.
But that's how we learned about it, is when we have that discussion.
Maybe they can help find funding for 330 Distel.
Are you trying to sway me, Vice Mayor? Let me just briefly address this. This is something a previous council has considered and explored, and we had previous staff look into it and present on this item. And the conclusion to councilmember Meadows' point was it wasn't worth it. And it was when councilmember Liang was mayor, I think it was brought forward a couple times. And so we have looked at it, and as a small city, I remember the conclusion was, it doesn't justify the cost. I would like to point out that without a lobbyist, putting the housing element aside, we have had success getting money for our city. We had state Senator Becker come here with his big check, and that just took, or connections.
Assembly member Berman, a few, because before that, we didn't, we get another, we got a whole bunch of money. Not that we can't use more, if you're out there listening.
Yes, yes. But I, but I am very familiar with this issue. It's something we have considered in the past. And to, councilmember Meadows hit the nail. It just doesn't, it's not worth it for a small city like ours. And there are other avenues for us to pursue these opportunities. Grant funding is separate, and I know, and I think we have a staff person who does this 50% half code. And those, I think, we should definitely continue to explore and figure out how to capitalize on grant opportunities. But when it comes to a lobbyist and thinking about who we're really lobbying at the different levels, we have those connections, and we've actually had success.
So just to clarify on that, we've never had staff look at it. It was always just like this, and it's just the opinions of the council members. So I just want to clarify that. And we, yes, we've never had the majority of council open to exploring it, but I think it would be worth exploring.
Okay, anything else? Okay, so we're almost at the end. Do you still want a break? Okay, so we are done with agenda item number three. Staff, is there anything else you needed from council on this item that we didn't already give you?
Nope, Mayor.
My notes back up. Next item are informational items. Those are there for everyone's information. We do not take public comment on them. And they are simply there for the communities and for staff's review, and the council's review, excuse me. Council and staff reports and future agenda items. Okay, I will go first. I am, in two weeks, I am going to attend the new mayor's conference in Monterey. So I would be grateful to my colleagues if we can end as early as possible on the 23rd because it starts the morning of the 24th, and I will be driving down early rather than spending an extra night down there. But I am looking forward to that.
You set the agenda.
The other item that I wanted to mention is, earlier today, I got an email from someone at the, at the CUSD, and it came in mid-afternoon. I didn't have the time to really look at it. But apparently, there is some kind of a safety meeting that is being organized at Montclair. I believe that it is on the afternoon of the 24th. I will be at the conference, so probably will be unable to attend. But I, our councilmember Flagler and I, the two-by-two, so I will forward that information to you so that both members of the two-by-two at least have access to the meeting. And that's all I have for reports tonight, so, Nisa?
Thank you, Mayor. Two proposed future agenda items, and we've touched on both already during this retreat. The first is on crossing guards. You know, we've all received communications on this topic. And I looked to the city manager to give direction on what a future agenda item would need to cover for us to address funding and any other action that we need to consider as a council in order to address the issue related to crossing guards provided and currently funded by the city.
So from a, from a process standpoint, this will be in front of council at mid-year as we need. We've extended the contract without funds associated with it, so it'll be back then. I think police operates the program or they oversee the program. They've created a list of pretty good ideas. I think for council, ultimately, who will make the decision, there's two ways we could go about this. We could, staff could bring it back if there's support, and we could talk about the ideas here, talk about the program here. And from there, work with the schools. Alternatively, it could go through the two-by-two committees first, and after that discussion, we could bring it back here. we could bring it back here.
I think as you go through the two by two first, I've already had conversations with a number of the trustees, including the president of the board, and there are some ideas percolating from their side. We would benefit from a dialogue over these ideas before we, you know, tried to move policy on it.
So from a, and if, I think that's a great way to go about it for council. Our contract goes through June 30 of this year. If there are to be any changes with this particular company, it takes quite a bit of time. So however council members want to schedule that, we would need a lot of lead time if there are going to be changes that involve the company to get it in place prior to the next school year starting.
And Mr. England, when do you anticipate the finance director bringing forward the mid-year budget?
We, I think we have mid-year scheduled in February.
Okay.
And we know the amount already on that. It will be one of a few requests, but I think we know enough about the contract now and where it's headed that moving to the school is perfectly appropriate.
I have a question on this item. So because we extended the contract, those crossing guards that are in place should continue to remain in place, is that correct?
That's correct. We fully funded all of the positions that were approved at the beginning of the fiscal year and the beginning of the school year.
Okay, so the problem is, because I'm receiving emails that some crossing guards will not be returning to their location, so I am concerned about that.
Those emails were received by the whole council, and the city manager replied to them to let those residents know.
All right, so we're getting dangerously close into a substantive discussion, so I want to pull us back a little bit. I think at the very least, there should be an informational item at the next council meeting, and then based on that, I think we could decide whether we want to agendize it. Does that sound like a reasonable way to proceed?
I actually, so I heard something differently from Mr. England. If mid-year is in February, and we can go about this one of two ways, either through the two by twos or as a council discussion, I think we need to decide. So for example, I'm on the MVLA two by two, and if this is something that council wants to have start, at least at the MVLA level, then we would immediately work with the city clerk to try to get a two by two schedule. If what council wants is, let's not go to the two by two on this since mid-year is in February, let's just have it as a council discussion, then that's a different decision. Because we need to decide, at least as to the budget, by mid-year.
Well, the, sorry, the budget, we've extended the contract, so we're bringing it back at mid-year. If council didn't approve that as a mid-year item because we've extended the contract, we would have to pull funding from other places than the general fund to fund it. But I think the, for the policy question is for council, do we go to the schools first and have that conversation with the information item here? And so I think that's what we, as staff, would like clarity on.
So the policy question is for next fiscal year?
Correct.
Okay. So then it goes back to, do we want to go to the two by two first, or do we want it to come back to council, knowing that they need a lot of lead time to negotiate? Right. But do we want to agendize it for council, or do we want to direct it to the two by two? I think that's the question.
Can we give direction right now to go to the two by two at this point in our meeting?
You have to agendize for discussion.
No, I think we could schedule the meeting. It's the two by two.
No, but the point is, we want it to have the discussion of the two by two so we can bring up other things for the two by two members to take back and talk about.
May I, Mayor?
Yeah.
So it might be helpful to consider this with two sort of case studies for the either, you know, for the either or, right? If we take it up as a council at our mid-year budget meeting, and we establish that we're willing to spend a quarter of a million dollars a year, which is roughly in line with what we initially decided to spend, that doesn't cover the cost. The cost is now closer to $400,000 or $500,000 a year, and so then you're leaving a gap.
You're getting in...
Okay, I'm not getting into discussion. I'm establishing what the scenario would be if we took it up, regardless of what our choice is for what budget amount we allocate, right? Unless it's 100% of the cost, you're still requiring the schools to come up with something. And I think it would be better on the other, the other way of organizing this is to sit down with the schools and see what they're willing to contribute.
It's either going to go to the two by twos, or it's going to go as a future agenda.
And you are getting into a discussion, so I really need to, you're getting into budget
amounts, you're getting into the discussion.
Please ignore the budget amounts, okay?
So two by two. So we will do two by two for next fiscal year, and we'll schedule those as soon as possible. That's my proposal.
So I think it's clear that the council wants it to go through the two by twos. My question to staff is, what's the easiest way for us to get there? Can we just simply do it from the dais tonight, or does it have to be an agendized item? Let me get the question and the answer from staff, and then I'll come to you, council member.
Mayor, I think we can, based on the discussion tonight, I think we can schedule a two by two meeting with the schools.
Okay, council member.
I think we should also have a discussion because I remember when I brought something up, I got chastised for saying, hey, I didn't give you direction, when this was something we had always discussed with prior to councils to have a discussion or to keep an open conversation about. So I think it's important for us to have that discussion with two by twos so we're all clear and on the same page as to what the two by twos are going to discuss, not only on this item, but on other items.
So what I'm hearing you suggest is that there's an agreement that it go to the two by twos, but prior to the two by twos meeting, we have a discussion in front of the council to define the parameters of what that two by two is allowed to discuss. Okay, are there two other council members who want to go that route?
I would just ask staff their preference.
On this topic, I think we have direction.
I agree, but it never used to be that way, and we used to have latitude. But then I got chastised by, so I just want to make sure, because I want to make sure that if there's other things that I feel that's valuable for the two by two to take, I would like to share that. Otherwise, if I say, hey, it's important for you to discuss this, it's a Brown Act violation because you guys are already Brown acted with the two by two.
So clarification from staff, if a council member would like a two by two to discuss a certain issue, is the appropriate procedure to let staff know, and then staff can forward that on to the two by two? Or is it, are we not allowed? Would that be too close to having a...
That would be a serial meeting, I think.
I think when, I'm sorry, yeah, I agree with that. I think tonight, what I'm saying is based on this discussion, I think I have direction.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
But the point was, if we want the two by two to discuss something else, that's why it has to be agendized, isn't that correct?
So I think that would be a separate agenda item unless there was council direction given. So if it's a topic council's discussing, giving direction on, or taking a position on, then I think that is fine.
Exactly, and that's been the practice. Councilmember Liang, we don't normally agendize the topic that aligns with a priority or something council is already working on to bring it to the two by two. I understand if it's a new issue that is not a priority for council or not in the works for council, that it makes sense to make sure that council supports the two by two discussing it. This issue is very much in front of us. It ties in with our priority from last year, community safety, and one we adopted today. So it could go straight to two by two. It doesn't come to us. If it's a new topic that as a council we have not adopted as a priority or have not discussed it before, that I can understand needing to come to us.
But like we were talking earlier in our priorities, how we wanted to have the two by twos talk about the shared open space. So we want to make sure that's going to be added to the two by two agenda as well.
I don't think there's a problem with that, but you know, I usually don't react to your soliloquies, but your revisionist history is really pissing me off.
Okay, you're out of order, Vice Mayor.
Sorry.
Okay, council member Flagler, do you have any other, anything else to report or other potential agenda items?
Thank you, Mayor. One more proposed future agenda item, as we're all aware of the Christmas Day fire, you know, someone mentioned to me that he's not aware of something like that on that scale happening in Los Altos in any recent time. And so I would love for our council, since this is one of our business communities that was severely impacted by this fire, to consider what, if anything, we can do as a council to support them. I know the chamber would appreciate it, I know the business community would appreciate it. And I don't, and, you know, funding is always the easy one, but if there are other things, for example, Mr. England and staff could propose how we can support them, I would love for us to have that discussion as a council. And it would require three, because I think Mr. England and his team would present some options to us on different ways we can support the business community.
I would like to interject and at least inform the council, there's an ongoing police and fire investigation. This is something that could dabble into some legal issues. I do not advise the council to do that at this time until we have more information from the fire authority and also the chief of police. So there is suspicion of foul play, so at work at the building.
Thank you, Director. Do we have an estimate as to when that, the report, we can, I'm seeing a head shaking no from someone who would absolutely no, so.
So Mayor, as a future discussion agenda item for business assistance, if council members support that, it's fine to discuss.
And I knew that, I mean, there's a way to parse the legal concerns from having this discussion, but out of respect for staff, Mr. England, if you would prefer for us to defer this, I am totally supportive of that. When the time is right for us to have this discussion, we should. I do think there's a way to do it without going into certain areas, but based on the feedback from staff, I am fine withdrawing it, and then we can figure out when the time is right to bring it back.
I, may I say something? So I like where you just ended up, I prefer that, and I will mention that the chamber has a fund, and we can all choose to donate to that fund.
Councilmember Flagler, anything else?
One last item, the Cal Cities Peninsula Division, along with the San Mateo Cities of Government and the Cities Association of Santa Clara County, is having its annual legislators' address on Friday, January 26 at 5:30 PM. And please look out for the email, you should all receive it in the next couple of days, and it's geared for elected officials, local elected officials. Thank you.
Thank you, and I think, doesn't the Cities Association have a new president of the board now?
Does it?
I think, I think maybe it does, and I, and we have not had a council meeting since that happened, so let me congratulate you on your election and your new position.
Thank you, Mayor.
And I, you know, I know that you're going to do Los Altos proud, and you'll remember us. You know, keep in mind where you came from.
I am not going anywhere, but thank you, thank you.
Okay, who would like to go next? Vice Mayor?
Just a brief announcement, I'm looking forward to the Los Altos Rotary Club meeting in two weeks, where two of our former mayors, King Lear and Mary Prochnow, will tell the story of the Gay Straight Alliance Parade in, I think it was 2004, maybe? It's about two decades ago, I'm not sure, but a very interesting moment in the history of Los Altos, and I think kind of a shining example of our progress in many ways. So I'm looking forward to that, and if anybody's interested in that, just reach out to me, and I will, I've got a video that's been prepared and some things that we can share, but really, really just a touching moment in Los Altos history.
Councilmember Meadows, Councilmember Liang?
I am sorry, Mayor, you know, when staff, when staff supports us after hours, I think they should be recognized, and I do want to thank Jean Magino and Anthony Carnesecca for attending the Cities Association holiday event in support of our city. Thank you.
Well, and actually, speaking of the investigation and the fire, I know a lot of staff spent a lot of time, and I myself had a conversation on Christmas Day with people. So thank you for all that, all of you did during the closure, not so closure, yes, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Meadows. Actually, following up on that, do we have any indication as to when southbound ECR will be open, at least in part, or?
So Mayor, we released a press release this afternoon addressing that, but demolition could begin as early as tomorrow, it's likely to. One or two lanes may be open, the late-breaking news from Captain Ledoux is they may try and remove the entire facade and open it all the way. Stay tuned, we'll have demolition starting soon, and the lanes will be open soon.
Thank you, and people can go to the city's website to get updates on the traffic conditions on ECR with respect to opening those lanes.
I don't know if we're linking that back from Caltrans yet or not, but we can certainly do that if we haven't started.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Meadows, anything else?
I just wanted to add on to that, Mayor. I want to make sure that this is being communicated to VTA as well so that we can reroute our buses to accommodate for traffic.
There's been less coordination, it's, where the fire happened was in the midst of a lot of jurisdictions, so there's been constant coordination.
Councilmember Liang, anything to report or future agenda items that you'd like to propose?
None, good.
Then with that, at 11:35, we are adjourned. Thank you all.